Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, September 17, 2018. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome. Welcome, welcome. Nate, will you call Roe, please?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Bowe is absent. Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. And like you said, Councilmember Bowe had another engagement tonight that he had to be at, so he will not be joining us at all tonight. So with that, we'll move on to item number four, adopting the agenda, or the corrections or additions to the agenda, if not, an entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler. Yeah, you can have that.
Yeah, thanks.
Discussion. Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us to item number five, visitor presentation. Is there anyone here under visitor presentation? Anyone? All right, we'll move on to item number six, approving the previous meeting minutes. Discussion, if not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz to approve the previous meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, moves us to item number seven, which is consent agenda item. These are items that we need to approve, but not necessarily discuss, but we can at any point in time. Discussion on consent. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent items seven A and seven B.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Rowe to approve consent agenda items. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, moves us on to item number eight, A, which is adopt resolution 2018-123, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of Phase Two of the Chaska Creek Way Street and Utility Improvements Assessment Rule. Who's got that?
My agenda's still popping up, but Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you today is a continuation of the improvements that we've made out at the Chaska Creek Corporate Center, and this is where the new Catalyst Medical Building is at. The improvements that we're talking about here would include the extension of the road that goes on the south side of the clinic going to the west, and then the utilities to go over there. We also have the, I don't know if it's a tunnel or a...
Box culvert.
Box culvert. Something that goes underground. Box culvert to basically carry the creek underneath the road so that we can extend that road to the south. These are supported through an assessment agreement that we have in place. Regardless of the assessment agreement, we still have to hold a public hearing to be able to accept that assessment of hearing and then move forward to actually assess the properties. If I've missed anything, or if you have any questions about specifically where it's at, our city engineer, Matt Clark, can answer any questions that you might have.
I do have one. Now, we're just gonna go and put the box culvert in and stop, but we're not gonna take it to the Creek Road?
Correct. Yep, so they've only petitioned, the developers only petitioned to put the box culvert in, really to allow them to control their own destiny and degrade the site. Right now, the creek severs the north in half, south half of the property, so by placing the box culvert in, it gives them the opportunity to grade the site the way it needs to be.
What are we looking at? When would that connection happen? I mean, is it next year?
It's really contingent upon area development, and some of it's tied to the Hy-Vee properties, some of it's tied to...
As I was gonna say, because...
When you say connection, are you talking about going all the way to Creek Road?
Well, Creek Road and then...
And then down to...
And then Creek Road, the rest of the way.
So our original agreement with the Frye property up there was that Hy-Vee could, when Hy-Vee comes in, we could be required to put it in, so they had anticipated about 2020 when they would come in, or if they didn't happen before that, we'd have the ability to trigger that ourselves. So really, what I think it's gonna be contingent upon is more the development of the stuff south of the creek than even the stuff in the, up in southwest Chaska area, because if you think now with the interchange being there, they don't have as much need to be able to get up to Inglewood Boulevard. So really, what that collector is gonna serve more is people just on the west side of town being able to get to downtown and then up into like Clover Ridge into the north, and then for people to be able to access those businesses in that industrial park. So we're trying to phase it so it matches up with cash flow of the development as it comes through, be ready to do it, but not do it prematurely. So by putting this box culvert in, it's really the piece that allows us to really pull the trigger whenever we feel it's ready.
And then, the other side coming from what I'll call south to the north, is that Traditions doing that, or is that, or we got our hand in that one as well?
From the south to the north...
Well, from southwest Chaska.
Yeah, so that'll be us that would end up doing that. There's some property that's left to assess up there, and then also up in the Frye property. There's a section that really is more of a collector road section that's, that'd be our expense, that's really that connection in between sort of like where Cottrell's House is and up to basically where the new road would meet Creek Road. And we built that into our transportation model, or as far as a cost that we'd have.
So there's nothing saying it's gonna happen next year, though?
No, I mean, to me, the great thing about having the box culvert in is it gives us the ability to do it whenever we want to. The box culvert had a lot of permitting requirements that went with it, timing was difficult. Once we get that in, we really control the rest of our destiny up there.
But now, we have to cross the creek again on the other side. Is that, did we get the same permits for that, or we have to re-permit that?
Yes, we'll have to go through the same process.
Well, would we start that now, seeing as it takes so long? Are you on a timeline once you get the permits?
Again, I think it plays into what Matt's conversation was, which is really setting it up for, as area development is kind of around and starts to pay for some of those improvements, then, you know, that's when staff would start to look at more heavily when traffic requires it and things like that for extending that Savannah Way Collector Road. It's not immediate, because all of the neighborhood accesses and things, we'll be able to get out to the interchange and get out to 41.
Before we got that interchange, that collector road was significantly more important. It's important now because we don't have a collector road on the west side of town. We have 41 going down the center and Audubon going down the east, but we don't have anything going down the west. But before, it was more than a collector road. It was almost necessary for that development to go forward. But now with the interchange, that really changes things.
Because I thought, I mean, it's just, and the reason I question is, is that there's so much question about the Hy-Vee, and I thought the Hy-Vee really wouldn't go until the roads went through.
Well, they, basically, the agreement says that when they decide to go, we have to build it. But if they decided for some reason not to go, after 2000, I think it's 2020, we have the ability to pull the trigger ourselves, and then those assessments automatically go against those properties that are existing on the Frye property there.
Have you heard any affirmative update on Hy-Vee with their...
No, I mean, they had an article in the paper, Star Tribune Today, talking about, they have 10 in those Twin Cities now, and they wanna have 13 open by the end of next year, but they were Maple Grove, Blaine, Robbinsdale, and then one Cub Food Store that closed down, I can't remember where that was. So Chaska wasn't on the list that they had for next year. But, you know, when they first came in and talked to us...
Right from the get-go, they said pretty much 2020.
They said 2020. That's, that's sort of always been their target.
Is there a point that we reached with them and they reached with us that it's time for them to move on, you know?
Well, they already bought the property.
Well, I know, but, I mean, I get that, but I mean, I hate to see that key piece of property locked up for a long period of time if they're never gonna build on it, so...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, you know, they've paid the assessments on the property and they bought the property, so they have, they have a significant investment into that property. So there's reason for them to build on it.
When we first, when we first met with them, when they were first coming to town, we, well, I asked them that question point-blank, "Do you buy property just to hold it?", and they said no. Okay, good. Because we thought there might have been some toying going on with another location not too far away, and where somebody being played there, and they said that they don't do that if they're buying property, they're buying it to build, and they're not buying it to block someone else from going in. Okay, good. I mean, that, now that, that's from the gentleman we met with, I only know that.
Right. It's a very good location. I mean, there's some strategic reasons why I think they'd wanna be there, but, you know, you sort of look at how they've been sort of progressing around the cities, and it's sort of been, sort of, it's come from the south, now they're sort of doing north stores, and I think they go up a little bit farther beyond that, so...
Okay. All right, kinda got off track there a little bit, but is there any other questions regarding the utility improvements from the council? No. So, all right, so this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:11, and is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the public utility improvements on Chaska Creek Way? Last call. All right, we'll go ahead, close the public hearing at 7:12, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution 28-123.
Motion to approve or adopt resolution 2018-123.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler, again, adopting resolution 28, 2018-123, public, consider adoption of Phase Two of the Chaska Creek Way Street Utility Improvements Assessment Rule. It's mouthful. All right, further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, moves us to 8B, adopt resolution 2018-121, adopt resolution approving concept plan for Pinnacle Polty Homes.
So Mayor, Councilmembers, actually, 8B and C are two items together. We're still learning this new system, and it separates the two resolutions by actions. So they're both together, but one is to address looking at the concept plan for Pinnacle Heights, which is the Hammers property just above Clay Hole and Fireman's Park, going up to the south of the Moores property, and then also then authorizing the preparation of the EAW that would be necessary for this property development. So this is one coming out of the Planning Commission that was recommended for approval, and Liz is here to talk about some of those details.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor. We're looking at a concept plan request tonight by Polty Homes for their development known as Pinnacle. So the site is highlighted in red on this aerial, so it is on the Hammers property that encompasses roughly 86 acres just south of Liberty Heights Drive and Moores Drive, kind of in the center of the city here, more of a zoomed-in perspective. So it's basically bounded by Highway 41 on its eastern edge, Creek Road on its western edge, and then additional single-family development to the north here, which is Victoria Point, and then Hammers addition, both those subdivisions about this vacant parcel or redevelopment parcel. There's bluffs that about its western and southern edge as well, so it sits up pretty high compared to the other parcels on Creek Road. So in terms of some existing conditions out there, this property is currently being used as agriculture or farmland today. There is a homestead on there, the Hammers family does reside on this piece of property and has done so for several years. There are two street stubs on the north side, one, as I mentioned before, is Moores Drive just on the northwestern corner, and then Liberty Heights Drive, kind of in the center of the northern edge, providing basically extension into this development site. Another road access is off of Cardinal Street, just on the eastern side there, and that's how they access the homes and the outbuildings that exist there today. So that's kind of where most of the buildings of the site exist. One of the buildings is the Hammer Saloon, which is also locally historically designated, so that has been going through the HPC process with the city in terms of how that is gonna get processed and guided, being that it is historically designated. Like I mentioned before, there are steep slopes that about this parcel on the west and southern side, so you can kind of see that in this exhibit here where more of the dense white lines are falling on this exhibit. We've also noted a couple tree groves on the site, so it is mostly open farmland today, but we did also recognize that there are a couple significant tree groves on the site. There's one that exists on the kind of northwesterly portion of the site as it abouts the existing Moores Park on the north side there. And then there was also a grove of oak trees noted more in the center of the site towards the western edge and kind of scattered as it meets up with the wooded steep slope area. So these are areas that we've kind of analyzed as being areas to further evaluate as they come in for preliminary through a tree survey and a preservation plan at that time to really understand the conditions of these trees and where there's possibilities for preservation, since that's always important on our list when we have residential subdivisions coming So tonight, we're looking at a concept plan approve, approval request tonight for 257 single-family lots, which are catered specifically to the active adults 55 years old and older. So Polty Homes is basically trying to encompass this del web community, which, again, caters to that active adult, adult lifestyle and has certain qualities encompassed within that type of community. So that would mean having a high amenity neighborhood for active adults, so when you hear of del web, that's really what it means. So it provides for single-level living, homeowner association, maintained yards, as well as snow maintenance. It has that idea of safety and seclusion from other parts of the community. It provides recreation, and then a very strong social network for the people who live within this neighborhood. So in terms of what they're proposing out there with this type of density and use, it is consistent with our comprehensive plan for low-density residential. So we have the concept plan up here right now, so as you can see, where the stub streets of Moores Drive and Liberty Heights Drive stub off today, they're showing extensions of that basically through the entire development, all the way down to kind of its southern extent up back into Liberty Heights Drive. The main entrance they're proposing, and this is definitely a big change that's being proposed, is they are requesting a, an additional access on Highway 41 as it crosses over Cardinal Street. So this would be the main entrance and access into the development, and really, what they're trying to achieve there is this basically main road that provides a nice vista into the community that centers upon their amenity center as you come in. So this is a right-in, right-out access that they're proposing right there, and they're still in communications with MINDOT right now to see about getting this access approved by them.
What if the access isn't approved?
Then they wouldn't move forward with the project. So this is a pretty pivotal piece of their project in order to make it work.
I had a conversation with John Solberg when we saw him last Friday, and I think there are indications that they're gonna do something. They're just trying to figure out what that would be.
Okay. They have to, obviously, they have to turn lane, then acceleration lane, out?
They'll have to do some improvements out there to make it work.
And that land would be all part of, they'd have to buy all that additional land then, or is that part of this, is it encased in this project already? The pieces that they need?
No, so they'll have to do a land swap with the Crown of Glory Church site, because their site basically...
Yeah, that, okay.
Comes down like this. It's kind of a triangular peninsula piece that comes down, so the way they're showing their access, it encroaches or goes over their site, so they're gonna have to buy some land, or not buy, they're proposing to basically swap land from the Crown of Glory site for some of theirs, to basically make that work, so they've...
How would they swap land? I don't understand.
So they'll be taking this land right here, as well as this land, and swap it out for a portion on this kind of eastern side of their site.
Oh, and they'll keep everything on site of that roadway, then?
Right.
I see.
So it'll be kind of a wash in terms of what they get for land and what they get back.
Because they're moving the road over.
Right, yep.
Got it.
So as it relates to that, there is one property that does gain access off of Cardinal Street as it ends in a cul-de-sac there today, so one of the things that they'll have to provide during the preliminary is an adequate access, providing full movement for the property just to the south of the site. So they're not showing it here in this sketch, but it will definitely be something they need to show in their preliminary submittal.
So the original, so you talked about the, the old home, the new home and the pole barn and all the other outbuildings, they're all going away?
Right. Yep. They'll, they'll basically be raising all of the buildings that are on this site as it exists today. The one that's in question right now is the Hammer Saloon structure in terms of how the HPC is gonna provide guidance on that, so they're still kind of in the works of figuring that out. So with the type of product that they're proposing out here, it is a single-level living product, but they are proposing three different sizes or types through the development, so you have 49 lots are oriented to the 44-foot wide lots, 147 lots are oriented to 50-foot wide lots, and then 61 lots are oriented to 60-foot wide lots. So they're offering kind of a different sliding scale in terms of the type of product that they're proposing out there, and I'll provide a couple exhibits of that as well. And then, we kind of touched on the land swap piece with the Crown of Glory site, but they're also proposing a couple areas where they'd like to swap land with the city. So they've indicated an area, kind of in the northwesterly area, that they'll be giving to the city, which is basically encompassed by wooded steep slope area, so it's not buildable to basically get some city-owned land back in return, which is a small sliver kind of in this general area that isn't encompassed by wooded steep slope.
Why is that a good trade? If we're getting land that they need to build on and we're getting unbuildable, undevelopable, nothing land?
It's, it's a valid question, so it's definitely something that can be discussed tonight to figure out if that seems like a valid...
I have that highlighted in here, because it just doesn't make sense what this is saying unless somebody here can...
Is that where the connection could be made down to the new property we just purchased?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, there's another piece up in the northwesterly area that's basically...
Because isn't that little sliver there, isn't that, and we're down below there?
We own this piece right here, so they're basically proposing that they'll wanna swap this little piece owned by the city for what they're proposing for.
But what, what would we do with that? What purpose, it doesn't, does it about any of our other land? Is it any even value to us?
It would eventually about a piece of property that we will own on the northwesterly side, so it will provide kind of a continuous connection to that other piece of land that we'll own.
What, I mean, I don't, what do you mean by another piece of land we'll own?
I don't know if I have a good aerial of this. So there's, this property right here was just purchased by the city for basically public works storage.
Okay.
That's the one that had the help building on.
So that's the little pole barn?
Yep. And as you can see, I mean, this area right here is where they're basically swapping with us, so that'll provide kind of a continuous connection with our other city-owned piece right here.
I don't know, doesn't...
So, and I see, so the, the piece just to the south of that is owned by the city, and the piece just to the north of that is owned by the city.
Right.
So by giving us that small piece, it's all, it just would all belong to the city.
Right.
We can't do anything with it, it would just, not that there's necessarily value there, but...
Yeah, it will provide an opportunity for us to bring utilities over to the southwest Chaska area, but again, it...
We wouldn't be up there, though, would we?
We might have a water connection that comes through there.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at some utility options, basically to serve in between the southwest area. It plays into our water zones from trying to connect and support the southwest. We're preserving the app, we'd like to preserve the option as a part of this, as if it's still feasible for us to bring, you know, a water connection between, through the parcels that are to the west, and then make a connection up here. We haven't fully vetted out that process yet.
Yeah, you'd think. That's why it just, I don't know, it's not making a ton of sense to me, but I'll have to let that... Okay.
So that's something we can definitely further discuss in terms of what your feelings are on that. The other piece I was gonna mention, again, kind of relates back to that tree preservation piece of the groves of trees that were highlighted on the site, so kind of more centered in the site is that grove of oak trees and a couple scatterings of other significant species there as well. So again, until we get a survey and a preservation plan, we'll know more on how to proceed with that. And then, another grove of trees kind of situated where they are showing an expansion of the Moores Park area to be preserved in there. But that kind of leads me into my next slide of talking about basically what came out of the park board conversation in terms of trails and parks.
Real quick, before we go beyond that, I just wanna make sure that we come back addressing the right issues. So your, your concern isn't, should that be included in development, but is it enough value to us that we would just swap it, as opposed to, as opposed to selling it?
Well, I thought when we bought that parcel off of, off of the Creek Road, that that piece up on top might be parsed that may need to develop, and that's not that same sliver, then?
No, because the stuff you're talking about is farther to the north, right?
Right, there is one other...
There is a piece down there that...
This one right here that they're proposing, but yeah, I mean, the one on top is also part of the discussion.
See, because we had that conversation that, you know, about, we talked about the value of the land, and they said, well, part of it might be we, they need a piece of that on top to develop this, and I thought that's what you're talking, but apparently we're not in the same spot.
Well, there, there is. There's two pieces. One of them is the one that we talked about, the other one is to the north, so there's actually two pieces of value to them. But I, I hear you're saying you're really looking at, what's the value to us?
Right, it just doesn't make sense that we're taking...
That we're swapping it just to swap it?
Yeah.
Not much of raising it to do so, other than for their benefit.
Yep. We can do that as part of the, you know, preliminary processes to come back and analyze it and show, is there really a value to us?
Right.
I mean, it makes sense to...
It's just when I, when, when you read it in here...
Yep.
We're taking developable land and we're taking undevelopable land in exchange, and to me, on paper, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and by preliminary, too, we'll know more on kind of where those wooded steep slopes are actually delineated as well, so we'll know more... are actually delineated as well, so we'll know more on kind of the actual raw approach.
Right, and I understand, this is the first shot at it, so, but I, it just, I don't know, that-
Yeah, we can, we can look at that.
Those two paragraphs just didn't make sense when you read it.
No, it's, it's a fair question.
So in terms of sidewalks and trails that are being proposed with this development, the way they have it proposed on their plan right now, they're only showing one side with sidewalks where we require both sides to have sidewalks on every street. So that'll be something that we've requested to have them change as they come in for preliminary. In terms of trails, what they have proposed is kind of a network of a trail system, kinda starting at one of the entrances into Moores Park, and basically coming down along that eastern side of the extension of Moores Drive all the way down to the southern limits of the development, where they were proposing to basically extend a trail down to Veterans Park. So Veterans Park basically abuts this southern tip here. So, they were showing a trail connection down there to connect into that park, which also wraps around that stormwater pond and connecting to Woodland Drive next to the cemetery on the north side there, to provide a trail connection. So as it relates to that piece of thing and thing, things, and how the park board has reacted to that, so they've, are supportive of a trail connection along Moores Drive there. However, due to the location of an archery range, basically done and constructed on the south side here, they did not see this as an opportune or even a safe connection point for that trail to go. So they've basically advised and requested that this connection be eliminated from the plan as they come back for preliminary. This is a very steep slope as you come down into Veterans Park, so it is a very challenging connection to make. And with some of the erosion control systems in place there as well, they just didn't see any value in providing that connection. So they have requested that that connection be eliminated as they come back for preliminary.
If you've seen how steep that slope is there, even if that wasn't there, that'd be a heck of a climb, right?
It, it sounds good on paper till you see it. I, I think it'd be a really neat connection, but yeah. I, I, I looked at that and I thought, how are they gonna do that slope?
So that was the park board's comment as it relates to that. And then as it relates to the, the park space that they're proposing, so there's two public park areas that they've proposed on their concept plan. One is basically an expansion of Moores Park to the south, basically adding three point three acres to that park space as public park. And then, they were showing another public park area again where that trail connection was occurring. But the park board again, due to the demographic that's being proposed out here for senior living, they did not see a need for an expansion of this park space to occur. This was basically put in line in our comp plan under the notion that this area was gonna develop as traditional low-density, single-family, which encompass much more families and children as a part of that. So with this changing over to an active senior living community, they did not see the need for this park area to expand. So they have, again, indicated or requested that fees be collected in lieu of any park dedication acceptance.
One note on that, the, so we either get ten percent dedication of land or we get a fee paid to us in lieu of that. And one of the things that we're always doing, and we look at it, and even the southwest Chaska area when we put together the comp plan is, it's not good to take all land dedication and it's not good to take all cash. Because neither one is gonna, is gonna do you any good without the other. So it's creating that balance between cash and land dedication so we can get the land to develop and then have the, the cash to actually develop it. Here, with the amount of amenities that they're putting into the, the neighborhood for the demographic that they have there, if you've been up to that Moores Park, it's big. And it's big enough to serve, sort of the, the neighborhood to the north and, and what's happening here. And what that allows us to do then is to take the cash dedication, really put it into the other parks that we have planned for development, especially like in southwest Chaska.
Isn't, that's, that's a pretty decent hike, say, if you're in the very southern part to go to that park? I mean, is that-
Well, they have other, they have other amenities in that neighborhood though too? So like the center part of the neighborhood and-
I, I kinda looked at that, but it doesn't show any of that, so that's why I was, that was a question that I had. It just shows kind of the, the, the building, but it doesn't really show anything else. And I know it has a pool, but I didn't know if it had any playground stuff there. I didn't, and if, if we're good with that, I'm fine, I just-
Yeah. I know that Liz and I and the public works director and the park director went out and looked, and given where the, I mean, we have an existing playground structure already, kind of next to Moores Drive, which you can see on the, if you pull that down a little bit, Liz.
Different.
The, where that is located, even with this additional, we wouldn't put another playground structure into this park.
Okay.
And so, they would still, if they wanted to go to the playground structure, they're still gonna walk the same amount of distance.
Okay.
The practicality is, is you have more land and you have two big flat areas that probably someday people would wanna turn into like a community soccer field or something like that, which probably doesn't necessarily fit in a neighborhood park like that.
So, I mentioned the two public park pieces that they're providing there. But the private park space that they're providing is basically in this, in the center of their site here. And it's basically considered their amenity center where they would provide provisions and recreation to the community members of this development. So it'd be exclusive to the people living within this neighborhood. But it will provide, I think at this point, the way they kinda have it laid out, but it's not yet finalized, is we'll have the pool space, the indoor space, which would provide fitness and a gathering center. They also have some tennis courts and pickleball courts as well, kinda programmed into that space as a part of that. And then, in terms of the three different products that they're proposing out there, so they have the forty-foot, foot-wide lots out there, which is their smallest product. So that would amount to having a thirty-four foot wide home with the setbacks applied. These will be slab-on-grade products, no basements, range from thirteen hundred to seventeen hundred square feet in size, have two bedrooms, two car garages, and then range from high two hundred thousands to mid three hundred thousands in value. And then the fifty-foot wide lots, which is their more popular product and medium product out there, they would be forty-foot wide homes, basements are gonna be optional on these lots, sixteen hundred to nineteen hundred square feet in size, two bedrooms with an option for a third bedroom or bonus room, two car garages, and these would range from mid three hundred thousands to mid four hundred thousands in value. And then their sixty-foot wide lots, these are their largest product, will be fifty-foot wide homes, basements, nineteen hundred square feet and plus, two bedrooms, third bedroom option or bonus room option, three car garages, and then high three hundred thousands to low five hundred thousands in value. So these ones are kinda more situated on the vista points of the development, kind of on the westerly and southerly portions of the site. So we've had several meetings before tonight's meeting that I'll kinda just brief you on. So they did go to the HPC as their first meeting to discuss the historic home on the site. And that occurred on September fourth. So they basically gave direction to the developer to set up a tour of the, the home to really get an, an understanding of the physical conditions of the home before they provide any further guidance to the developer. So, they're still in the midst of correspondence in how to proceed with the historic property there. The developer also did conduct their own neighborhood meeting on September sixth of this year to basically introduce the proposal to the neighborhood out there and get any feedback, questions answered, or provide concerns at that time. So in general, or in a summary of that neighborhood meeting, concerns relating to construction traffic, the overall traffic, drainage of the site, screening and buffering were the main concerns brought up at that time. The park board also conducted a, a meeting or a work session on September tenth, which was last Monday. So, I kinda gave a briefing on their guidance for the Trails Parks tree preservation and open space pieces that they mentioned then. Some other comments relating to this proposal is, they are planning to provide anti-monotony with their product out there, so they'll have to adhere to the city's anti-monotony ordinance and provisions within that. And then, due to the scale and the amount of units that they're proposing with this residential development, they will be required to put together an EAW. So that'll be, again, a part of this item, a second motion from you tonight is to get that process started or authorized by you guys. So, I have the two motions laid out that you'll be making on this proposal. The first one is to adopt resolution number two thousand eighteen dash one-two-one, which is approving the concept plan, applicable to the conditions that are listed in that resolution. And then, the second motion that you would be making would be adopting resolution number two thousand eighteen dash one-two-two, which is authorizing the preparation of the EAW for the Pinnacle residential development. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I know the developer has a couple things to say as well.
Okay. I just, as I've been going through now, that, I wanna go back to that second public park. Looks like it is that downward slope? Is, I mean, is that what we're, or is that going away?
Yeah, the park board is recommending that.
I thought, cause I thought you said that, but then again, you said the second park was here, and I thought, well, that land is really, probably wouldn't be real usable unless we need it for, again, utilities.
The upper part, they might heap of that, you know, for an overlook or something like that, or how the trails might go through, but I think they kinda wanna work that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else, questions? Okay.
Just kinda noticed, just by looking at the map here, I guess, kinda another concern I have along what you mentioned earlier, is just transition from existing homes into this development. It seems like we've got kind of a, a quick change in, in home styles and, and lot sizes. All of a sudden, we're going from single-family, it looks like what might be eighty-foot wide lots, and then you've got a series of one, two, three, four, forty-foot lots that back up to those, those existing homes. I mean, are there plans for those homeowners for buffers? Or, I'm assuming those homeowners aren't gonna be too appreciative of what's being placed there?
First property owner on Highland Drive was at the planning commission, and, you know, there is one they're showing on the south, but they also requested some level of screening on the west side as well. And, given that this is a concept, you're not really detailing that up.
Trying to hammer out all the details, but-
But we're taking that information in and, you know, including that as part of what they need to look at when they're doing their preliminary plans, is that screening along that edge, other places they-
I just think that could be a better transition than what's shown here.
Yeah.
Would like to see something a little bit better, but as a concept, I guess.
And my, my other one would be is, is there screening gonna be done at the cemetery? Where the lots butt up to the cemetery?
There isn't any screening proposed at this time.
I mean, is that something that's gonna come back and? Being this is concept, I think it's something you might wanna have that conversation about.
Yeah.
Talking the loop road that goes along the north side of-
What's that?
The loop road that goes along the north side of the cemetery.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I, some people's cemeteries, they don't, that kinda freaks them out.
Yeah, we're trying to be very careful, especially on this one, just because of, you know, how old it is.
Half of them won't complain.
I, I don't, I don't. I, I'm just saying, it just, that it never came up about any kind of screening or anything. And I, I just, I just figure at some point that conversation's gonna come up as you start building there. I don't know what phase that is, but. And the cemetery's not going anywhere. So, okay.
Thank you.
And-
You wanna help him, Liz?
You must be the gentleman that's gonna come up and speak before us?
May I?
Absolutely.
Good evening. My name is Paul Hoyer, Pulte Homes, seven-five-zero-zero Flying Cloud Drive, Suite six-seven-zero, Eden Prairie, Minnesota, five-five-three-four-four. I also live in Chaska, I could give you that ad, address as well, but it's a pleasure to be here this evening. We have Eric Paget from our office as well, and we have a large contingent here from the Hammer's family. So we've been studying this property for about a year, and we've done a lot of research. We take a lot of pride in doing our homework upfront to the extent you can without doing surveys and drilling holes in the ground and all those things that would be the next step. And I'd like to share a presentation with you tonight that has some graphics that helps you understand why we're proposing, what we're proposing, and how we came up with the concept plan, because I think it's important for you to understand how we got to where we are today. So, Pulte Homes, we do develop, we're building homes in Chaska right now. You might remember my face, I think it's all the same council members as a few years ago. Brooks Ridge is the name of our, our neighborhood off Pioneer and Bavaria Road.
They've been selling like hotcakes, at least it looks like it.
It's gone well, yes, thank you. We also developed a property in Chanhas, and you might have seen as you're driving on two-twelve. It's right at the northwest quadrant of one oh one and two-twelve. There's an apartment complex there, and you might have seen some cranes and things just behind it. That's another one of our neighborhoods. We also have a, a neighborhood in Victoria. But, bottom line is, we're a fairly large home builder, and we take a lot of pride in the homework that we do when we submit applications to cities. So we build into three name brands across the country, but in the twin cities, we've really only built to date under the name Pulte Homes. Now, the next section really, I'm not gonna cover the areas that Liz did a great job with, but I want you to understand that when we look at what we can do with the property, there's different categories of constraints. And there's really four that we deal with all the time. The first deals with regulatory. So the first thing we do is we study the comprehensive plan. We wanna make sure we're proposing something that makes sense and that is allowed by the city. And in your comprehensive plan, it tells us what parks and open space you want, what trails you want, and, you know, we, we, we design this concept plan to give you exactly what your comprehensive plan called for. I realize there's changes, especially with respect to parks and trails, and we're fine with that. We're, we're flexible and we'll work with your staff and commissions to get the parks that you need. A secondary factor or category of constraints is physical. This is actually covering both regulatory and physical, and that's bluffs. And from our calculations, it looks like the area bounded in red will be technically qualified under your ordinance as bluff. And there are certain restrictions as far as bluffs so that we have the safety of the public in mind. Other physical constraints are wetlands, which we haven't done a delineation yet, so we don't know for sure, but aerial photography indicates those are the locations. And finally, existing access, which again, Liz covered. There's a couple other constraints for us. One is of course, political or social. So we do our best, especially in an area like this that's immediately adjacent to existing homeowners, to try to do things that make sense, provide as much buffer as is very reasonable. And I'll show you a couple slides later that shows how we approach that. And the fourth category is something related to the market. We have to propose something that we think can succeed on this site. So when you throw together those four constraints, regulatory, the political, the physical, and the market, you know, sometimes you've gotta kinda thread the needle to give everybody what they want. So our goal in putting together this concept plan is to have something that succeeds for us, that relatively satisfies the neighbors and gives you every- us, that relatively satisfies the neighbors, and gives you everything you've been looking for. And if we do that, you know, we've done a good job. So a little bit of background, you may have heard that we have announced a few months ago that we're going to build our first Del Webb community in the Twin Cities, and it's up in Corcoran in the northwestern suburbs, right across the street from Maple Grove. And we've been looking for a site in the southwest Twin Cities for something similar to a Del Webb. We do have constraints as far as Del Webb communities that you may be familiar with in Arizona, Florida, Texas, across the country. Typically, they're pretty large, you know, they're a thousand, two thousand, three thousand homes. In Twin Cities, that's harder to do for a variety of reasons, but the bottom line is, we get over about three hundred homes, and we can start considering branding it as a Del Webb community, and there are reasons for that, which I'll, I'll get into here. So what is a Del Webb community? In nineteen sixty, Mr. Del Webb created the first active adult community, and it really focuses on the people fifty-five and older, and it's a, it's a lifestyle. It's a different way of living that, that people hadn't encountered before. And that has to do with beauty, kind of a resort-type feeling, a lot of social and recreational opportunities, smaller lots, because they're, they're done taking care of the lawn and the snow.
A lot of golf carts, too.
Golf carts, especially the ones with golf courses. A lot of Del Webb communities are adjacent to golf courses, it's true. So what makes a Del Webb community? I've covered some of these already, but age, the size and scope of the amenities, certainly the photo there at the bottom, we're not going to be building something that massive here, I'm not trying to sell that, but we will right-size the amenities. There are certain expectations when somebody buys into an active adult community, it has to satisfy their recreational and social needs. In a larger Del Webb community, the third bullet down is a facilitative act of, active lifestyle. So there's actually a director of facilitation, of activities, that works full-time for the homeowners association, and they keep the people busy. They organize all the activities, whether it be, you know, live music, educational opportunities, financial advice, all sorts of things, crafts, they keep them busy. And a large part of what makes a Del Webb community is the showcase presentation. When I ask my mother, you know, what, what did you like about the Del Webb communities you visited? And I always hear two things, it feels like a resort, and it feels safe. And those are two huge factors for this age, age group. So one of the characteristics of designing a community to be like a Del Webb community is the arrival drive. And the arrival drive always is a parkway with no driveways on it, with a lot of, a lot of open space, beautiful views, impressive monuments as you enter. So it's, it's, it gives you a sense that, you know, you're there, you've arrived. And the arrival drive always leads directly to the amenity center, too. So it's a certain kind of resort design trait that Del Webb has become very good at. This, just a quick map showing all the states that have Del Webb communities, it's not just a southern climate thing, all the states in yellow have Del Webb communities. So there are a number of Del Webb communities that have been successful in the northern climates, too. What can you expect in your city? The economic value of these folks is strong. These are people who have worked all their lives, saved their money, they have the time and the discretionary money now to spend. Their social contribution is typically very, very large. These are people who are trying to fill their time and try to do good oftentimes, so these are the volunteers in communities. They're quality citizens, they're good neighbors, these are the people that are oftentimes at home and watching out for the neighbors. And you can always count on an active adult Del Webb community as being very beautiful. So the positive, the cost benefit of this type of a user and this type of a neighborhood is, is very positive for a city. So again, ideal neighbors, light use of all the infrastructure. You know, typically, all of our infrastructure systems are designed for peaks. Your sewer flows, your water flows, the one we notice the most, streets. Everybody's leaving at the same time in the morning and coming home at the same time at night. Many of these homeowners are retired, they come and go at different times, and we have studies that show that the peak traffic flows are sixty-four percent less for active adult neighborhood than for a single-family neighborhood. And these folks pay taxes for the schools, they don't send the students, I realize that's not a city deal, but it all, it all starts accumulating as far as the, the positive cost benefit. So the traits that we incorporated as a Del Webb community in Pinnacle, we designed using all our standards, the arrival drive, same type of homes, single-level homes, these are Del Webb homes. Unlikely for us to be able to brand this as a Del Webb community. It's a little too small, so it'll likely be branded as a Pulte Homes Active Adult Community.
But, I mean, let's think about that just for a second, so, and, because I'm very familiar with who Del Webb is, I lived in Arizona for quite a few years, and one of my best friend's family competes against that.
Ah.
Last name of Robeson Communities. But Del Webb is always, at least in my mind, living in Arizona is good quality, you know what I mean, it just brings kind of that ring to it.
Yes.
I have nothing against Pulte, but to me, sometimes Pulte means track, you know what I mean, house, 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 you know, kind of crammed in there, you know, and things like that. So that's what I'm just saying, I mean, why wouldn't you want to, even though it's a smaller development, why wouldn't you, I mean, because I think Del Webb is cool, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Pulte's not that cool to me, you know what I mean?
I'm sorry to hear that.
But Del Webb is cool, you know, so that's why I'm trying to figure out why you wouldn't want to, you know, I mean, I, I think I'd be, I think it'd be pretty neat to have a Del Webb community in Chaska.
I appreciate that.
And, and nothing against Pulte, they build great product, but, but to me, it's just...
The Del Webb brand is...
Kind of like Frank Sinatra versus, you know...
I, I hear what you're saying, and to me, that means we've succeeded, because the Del Webb brand is iconic. Anybody in the southern climates is familiar with Del Webb, and it's a very positive reputation, very positive. I'm, I'm sometimes surprised how many people in Minnesota are aware of it, even younger people. It's a very well-known brand, high-quality, resort-type environment. But like any time, you have a strong brand, you have to protect that brand, and there are certain, certain criteria you have at a minimum. For instance, if we're under three hundred homes here, we won't be able to afford, they won't be able to afford as a homeowners association, a full-time facilitator. So there are certain economies of scale that just require certain, certain things. So we have to protect the, the Del Webb brand, and it seems arbitrary perhaps that three hundred is that magical number, but we've been building these for fifty-eight years, so, sixty, fifty-eight years. So they've seen a lot of successes over the years, and they've got it down to the point where if you have this many people living in a Del Webb community, this is the matrix of amenities that should be there. So it's, it's very finely woven, but we are designing this regardless. As a Del Webb community, it'll be the Del Webb homes, it'll be maintained the same way, it'll have the homeowners association, so that unlike a typical neighborhood where everybody mows their lawn at different times and some do a better job than others, this is all done at the same time by a homeowners association management company, so it always looks fantastic. So I, I appreciate your comments about Del Webb, and I, I think that means we succeeded. I think your concept of Pulte may be a little, a little off, we're, we're a little broader than just tract housing, and I think if you looked at our website and drove our neighborhoods in the Twin Cities, I think you would, you would see us in a new light. I appreciate the comment, though, and you're right, I mean, the Del Webb brand...
Well, we like to do things, we like to be unique in Chaska, and, and so, that to me is something that I think would be pretty cool to have a Del Webb community in Chaska. It comes out easier than saying, well, I live in the Pulte Active Older Adult Community, I'm old, so just cast me aside and give me the discount at Perkins, right?
Believe it or not, I feel exactly the same way, and I've tried to lobby that sort of thing.
And I can get the discount now.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you all are saying, my God, he looks like he's thirty years old.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's not what I'm getting.
It's not what you're thinking.
Talking about Paul, or...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Don't compromise on the Mike Webb community.
Yeah, that's right, oh boy. Because I, I agree with Councilmember Rowe, I mean, you're at, if we were at a hundred and fifty homes, and you're doing it all to Del Webb at two fifty-seven, and that number may change, you never know by the time you're all done, it just seems kind of strange that you wouldn't use that to attract, to use that as attraction, if you're doing it anyways.
Yeah.
Think about it.
Yeah, that's what all masks is, just think about it.
I think the point he's making or is attempting to make is the fact that the, the space just isn't large enough.
Right, no, I get that.
To fully qualify it. I mean, this is, the context isn't, but if they want to build, if you want a, a Del Webb area, you, you need to find a bigger area, because it just, it just won't reach that, to reach all those amenities and qualifications, you, you need more space, you're going to need more homes. This is something that could be developed in that concept, but it, there's just not enough homes there to support the overall Del Webb process.
It hasn't been decided.
Think about it.
I did not want to oversell this, and promised you tonight that we were going to do a Del Webb community. I, I wasn't going to do that.
Right.
I think it's unlikely, but I keep using that word unlikely, I'm trying.
If we don't ask, we won't know.
Well, here's my question, and the mayor always tells me I need to have more of a filter, but, so to me, what that says is, well, this community won't be as good as a Del Webb community. I mean, that's, that's what I'm reading into it.
My response is, in what way?
Well, I mean, it just seems like if, if it doesn't meet the, because I think you could have a, a, a real badass community of two hundred and fifty-seven homes, you know what I mean?
Yes.
That, that could live up to the Del Webb, you know, model and branding and all that, and, and I think it'd be a great challenge, you know what I mean, to say, how do you do Del Webb Lite, you know, but still have all that quality, but it's just, it's not three thousand homes, and, you know, I've been out to Sun City many times, and, you know, I, I would just think that, you know, there'd be a way around this. I, I just, I think when you say, hey, we got a Del Webb community in Chaska, that, that's just pretty cool. If we say, and I'm not dragging Pulte down again, but, but Pulte to me is, it, it's the difference between somebody driving, you know, if, if somebody's driving around in a Bentley, and then somebody's driving around in a, in a, in a Ford, you know what I mean, people are going to go, ooh, wow, that's a Bentley. And that's kind of how I look at the Del Webb community, say, ooh, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty cool, but it's not that the Ford isn't a great car, you know what I mean, it's just that there's many of them around.
You're, you're exactly right.
And that's what I, like the, so did I tie that together okay, without solving too many people that drive Fords and things?
I drive a Ford, by the way.
Well, I know, that's why I brought it up.
I care if he's got a javel.
But, but...
Well, I drive a Bentley, so...
But, but that's what I'm getting at, is, and so, you know, and, and I'll, I'll stop talking, but we do so many unique things here. I mean, we have a grand opening...
I live here, I noticed.
Yeah, we have the grand opening of Bavaria Downs tomorrow, and that is a very unique project out there. We've got the Curling Center, we've got the Community Center, we've got one of the best golf courts, you know what I mean, so...
The trail system.
That's why I'm just imploring upon you to take a relook at it, and, you know, maybe Chaska is the best place to start with a smaller Del Webb community.
I will take that back.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Because maybe they're all built out on the extra-large ones, maybe it's time to look at calling it a Del Mini Web or something, you know, where it's smaller.
I wish I could make all the decisions.
Yes.
Would it be great to have a dictatorship?
Yeah, but if they're being built to those standards, it's nice to somehow incorporate that, so people understand that it's at that quality.
I hear you, and believe it or not, I'm using the same argument, so we're on the same page.
Okay, good. If you want me to come into a board meeting, just call.
I will call you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, exactly.
But it has to be in Arizona in February, not here.
He'll call you.
I'm going to move on from this, Liz, Liz covered that.
Good point.
You know, we covered that pretty well, too. So the Del Webb design traits, so, again, I don't know how this is going to be branded, but we are designing it as a Del Webb community without perhaps the facilitator. The arrival drive is there, the view corridor is on that arrival drive, it's a key component that we worked hard to create. The amenity center, which we need to right-size it, and what that is at this point, I don't know. We're going to have to do some market research to really see what this buyer's going to want in this area. One of our problems is you have so many great public amenities in this city, I'm aware of all of them, that we, we need to think this through. And our single-level housing options is obvious a key, obviously a key part of what people are looking for. So we followed the comp plan with the things we saw in there, and, and this is a key slide here, this is, this is why we believe this property is ideal for an active adult community. The market demand is there, we've done some research throughout the Twin Cities area, and the southwest suburbs is a strong area. Your trails and nearby public parks are always attractive, and you're close to downtown, you're close to healthcare, worship, retail, you're not that far of a drive to the airport, these folks oftentimes are coming and going at different times of the year, so that's a factor for them. Private amenity, of course, is always something they're looking for, both for the social aspects and the recreational aspects. And that, that feeling of security and safety that I referred to earlier, this property, again, is ideally suited for this, because as you drive in, it feels like you're going to a dead end. It's a peninsula on a plateau high above the rest of the city, it appears to them. And what feels more safe and secure than going into this, this, this parkway with all this open space buffer, and then you get to your neighborhood, and there's only, you know, a, a couple ways out? So that is the kind of feeling that is kind of natural, it's inherent, and we do other small design traits to make it feel even more secure and separated from the world. Minnesotans don't like gated communities, so we don't do those, but sometimes we, we add little things at our entrance that give that impression to make it feel just a little safer.
Are these city-owned streets or private streets?
City. Yeah. And a big part of what we do, an area that's surrounded by a lot of existing homeowners, is think through, how do we design this neighborhood to, again, thread the needle with all those four categories we talked about, but not only that, but have the, the different sizes of lots to appeal to the different buyers, and to have it so that you can phase it, so that you have enough of each type of lot in each phase, because this is a four-year development. And how do you respectfully design it so that the neighbors feel like, yeah, they did a pretty good job? It's hard for me to scream and yell too much, because it's a pretty good job. And I try to go a little bit further than pretty good, and this slide shows the green buffer that is surrounding the property. And in some areas, you simply cannot have a green buffer, you have to connect to streets where they exist, and there's existing homeowners right there, but where we had the ability to do that, and where we felt it was important, we've designed buffers into the site. The homes was covered pretty well, I just want to point out a couple things. You know, people this, at this stage of life, the kids are gone, so they need smaller homes, they don't need as much space. They typically don't have as many toys either, so they typically don't need as big a garages as well. For the smallest home, we find our primary buyer there is a widow, widower, single people. Oftentimes, they're looking for less space, they don't need that much space, and this is the house for them. Middle size is our pretty typical sale, this is the, the couples primarily are choosing this type of home. In all of these homes, there is an option for kind of a half-story above, it's a bedroom for the kids, the grandkids to come over and stay overnight if they come into town, so oftentimes, that is chosen by our buyers as well. And the largest one is, similarly has an option for a third bedroom upstairs and a half-story, also has a three-car garage and the basements. Covered the homeowners association pretty well, the amenities we covered, too. We're going to have to do some market research, we know we're going to have a clubhouse, we know there's going to be a pool, and we know there'll be a fitness center and some social area in there. Beyond that, we don't know. I know pickleball is, pickleball is just hotter than a pistol right now, in fact, we're being told that...
I play four times a week.
I thought he got that input from you, I thought that's why they had pickleball.
If you don't have them in there, if you don't have those Del Webb pickleball courts...
You see them?
I see them.
Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but that's our intention.
Let's see them. Yeah, boy, you see how smooth that is? We're going to have them, but I don't know if we're going to have them.
You think of running for mayor next time? It's the name or the pickleball court, you only...
The other big thing is the fire pit, that's becoming a very popular thing, and it's more than the fire itself, it's the, it's the outdoor space you can create, that kind of has almost like fake walls with arbors and landscaping in it, be a very nice social hour. Benefits to the city, so I, I don't know what we get yet, I mean, we, we have to go through details and figure this out. Hopefully, we get approval at some point in time, but I think it's, I think it's fine at this point to start laying out, all right, this is what I think this would bring to the city, and I have two slides that outline... But I think it's, I think it's fine at this point to start laying out, alright, this is what I think this would bring to the city, and I have two slides that outline those items. Maximize downtown spending, I know that's a priority, it's a priority in all, um, beautiful old downtowns. Minimize the burden on public services. These people truly do have a great cost-benefit ratio, and, um, peak traffic is so much less than a single-family neighborhood. More activity in Fireman's Park and Veterans Park, when I go down there and hang out and watch all the activity going on, I think of, I think of a lot of these buyers loving activity. You, you talked about the cemetery earlier, we're, we're stunned sometimes the type of buyer for fifty-five and older lots and homes, what they find to be interesting. Brooks Ridge off Pioneer and Bavaria, our first two buyers were train nuts. They love trains, they wanted to buy the lots right on the train tracks. And there's other stories, up against, uh, the back of a Walmart loading area, and these people wanted to buy those first because there's activity going on. So, you just never know. So, when you, you talk about the cemetery, you know, there's enough lots that those who wanna be by it, um, can be by it, those who don't wanna see it, they're, they're not gonna buy in those areas. Similarly, around the, uh, around the amenity center, some people wanna be where all that activity is, and they love the noise, and they wanna be there. Others, they don't wanna be, they wanna be off in the corner because they're private people and they just wanna go hang out every once in a while and it suits them. So, you know, we have to try to design a, a neighborhood so that it suits all these different buyers that have different needs, but I think they're gonna love Fireman's Park. Highly sought-after active Dell community, truly, this is a unique thing. You see a lot of, um, condos, uh, attached housing-type senior living. You don't see much for significant-sized detached housing in the Twin Cities, you really don't. There is a need for this.
Agreed. My wife are doing the same thing right now.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
And it provides your residents the opportunity to stay in Chask. I hear this from a number of cities saying, bring this kind of stuff to us because we're losing our people. They're moving out of the city because they can't find the housing they're looking for. The connection to forty-one will improve the transportation network. This is a very sensitive, um, neighborhood to the existing residents, I mean that in two ways. One is the type of people who are living here. They're great neighbors, and also with the buffers that we've created around the perimeter of the neighborhood. We're providing parks and trails, or maybe not, depending on what's decided by the Parks Commission. Um, we protect the wetlands and the bluffs, and this is the type of neighborhood that produces high tax revenue and really low services. That's all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions, we're really excited to be here, it's been a year in the making for us.
So, help me, what's the pinnacle piece? What does pinnacle mean when you stuck Pulte, then you got pinnacle, then you got Dell Web, what's the pinnacle?
You're gonna make me share all of our secrets tonight.
Well, don't put it on your slides then. I ask questions, that's my job.
We have one point two million viewers.
Yeah.
Well, when I have to, um, prepare an application to the city, I wanna come up with a name, and it's high up on a bluff, so I came up with the name Pinnacle. Sometimes my names last right on through and it becomes the real name, sometimes our marketing folks overrule me.
We got a pinnacle heights already.
Yeah, yeah.
That might be too close for the county recorder to, uh, allow it then.
I just thought it'd help you.
Thank you.
No, I was just trying to figure what, what that was supposed to mean, now I get it.
Okay. Well, I think it's an exciting, I think it's, I mean, that's the housing that I'm, what, you know, what you talked about, the, the last two slides, is that people are moving out of the community cause it, we don't have single-level, single-level living, and that's what people want. I think that this is great, I mean, even some of your, uh, the forty, the forty-four-foot lots, uh, might even fall under affordable, depending, affordability's all over the, all over the place on what the numbers exactly are, but, uh, that, that may even fall under some of that category, so we can hit a couple birds with one stone there, so, um, but I, I, I think it's a neat thing, I think the piece of property is really neat, it's got, it should have some, um, interesting views and, and, um, it'll be tucked back in there, hardly nobody will know it exists.
That's right, that's what they want.
So.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's, I think it'll be neat, just gotta work out those few little minor details, pinnacle, Dell Web.
Dell Web.
That one.
It's just nice.
Slivers of land, parks.
Both saying aging adults into apartments and condos and such, and shared roof lines and shared walls where they can actually have their own homes. Still, just scale it down.
Independence, people really do want their independence.
What's key in that first-floor living? I mean, that's, my, my wife and I, the home we're building right now, it has that first-floor living. You know, as we, uh, look at the next twenty-five, thirty years, so.
It's important.
Yeah. And then I think if you look at that development, you look at fifty-five and older, and, you know, three hundred, uh, half a million dollars, you know what I mean?
Yes.
You're, you're gonna pull people with disposable income, and that is important.
Yeah.
I mean, it is important for us to have affordability, but there is another factor there that, you know, this council we've looked at is, you know, we want our businesses to thrive, and, and so sometimes, uh, you know, we have to kind of balance the affordability versus having the disposable income rooftops, cause if we don't have those, our businesses aren't gonna thrive.
That's right.
And I see.
Well, that was one of the goals in our downtown master plan, was looking at the neighborhoods immediately surrounding, how do we create an opportunity for people to easily shop downtown?
Yeah, exactly. So, I think this neighborhood would accomplish that.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely would, so.
Great location, being close to everything.
Yeah.
That's what they would need. Walk, ride, golf cart.
We just need to get that trail down that hill, maybe an escalator.
Elevator, maybe.
As much as I'm not trying to butter him up on the name thing, but that, I have to say in sincerity that of all, in my, all my years up here in the council, I think that's the first time we've had a developer come in with that kind of a presentation. I mean, I can't think of one that has done that. I mean, staff presents, and then generally, developer will come up for questions, but I appreciate the thorough presentation that you gave.
Thank you.
And I could be wrong on that, but I, I can't think of any that come to the top of my head, so.
That, that actually do a presentation.
Yeah. Where do you live in Chaska?
Right up by the community center, that little neighborhood right beyond, uh, Park Ridge Drive.
Oh, sure, oh, yeah.
Trail system back there, love it.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. No, that was really, really ne- I, like I said, I think this is a neat opportunity and, uh, let's see what happens here.
Thanks.
See what the next steps are. Any other comments or questions up here, otherwise, um.
I know there's a gentleman out there that wanted to speak to, from this.
Oh, is there anyone else? Is there someone else that wanted to speak?
Yeah.
Just if you would, uh, your name and address for the records, please?
First-time caller, longtime listener.
Make it to those.
Brannacar, twelve-thirty Moores Drive. Um, unfortunately, I haven't been working on this for a year, my staff, uh, did not put it together for me today either, so. I know everybody's busy, so I'll do my best to, to run through, run through a few things here. Um, I'm here tonight not as an opponent of the proposed development, but rather as a concerned citizen whose family and neighbors will undoubtedly be affected by the decisions associated with this development. Again, I, I'm not against progress or the development of this property, I, I would recommend the property to my parents, in fact, I, I, I don't have an issue with that. The one thing that I do have an issue with is, I almost feel like the developer is proposing things and, um, our Parks Board is actually taking away some of the amenities that the developer wants to provide, namely, the park. Um, you know, I, I spent a great deal of time researching our home that we purchased two years ago. Right out my front door is the city park. Part of that research that I put into buying my home, I looked at the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan. It's clearly on there, and I also researched past meeting minutes with park boards, uh, city council, other developments that have happened there. It's been the plan all along to double the size of the park, or at least extend that park. My wife and I, we, we have four kids, all under the age of eight, and I believe it was brought up at the commission meeting that, um, our neighborhood, just Moores Drive alone, has fifty kids that live on that block. Um, my kids go to Clover Ridge Elementary School, there's, I think, twenty-one or twenty-two students that get on the bus at their stop. There is a, a huge amount, number of children living in that area, and, you know, I always kinda thought that that park was going to grow as my family grows, as the entire neighborhood grows. Um, so I, I do have concerns with that. I was not invited to the neighborhood meeting, um, I'm not upset about that. Uh, a- and then also, I guess, reference to was the, uh.
Let me stop you for a minute, why weren't you invited?
I don't know.
Oh.
I, I, I don't know what the cutoff was, I mean, my property doesn't border up against it, I don't know what the.
Probably three hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't know, I'm, I'm not bothered by it, but if I wouldn't have done the research and, and kinda followed some of the government affairs, I would know nothing about this, and I'm willing to bet that's the case with a lot of my neighbors. Um, so sadly, I, I'm here, I do have one other neighbor here, um, that is probably going to speak, but, uh, you know, i- in reality, in an attempt not to be overly dramatic, um, I was shocked, saddened, and outraged to hear the park board's comments conveyed by the city planner at last week's planning commission meeting. To seemingly in one fell swoop dismiss the comprehensive plan, dismiss all the previously recorded meeting minutes pertaining to the expansion of this park, dismiss the current residents and users of this park, and sadly dismiss future users of this park. To simply state that the proposed park is not needed is a slap in the face to us and a disservice to the residents of this community. I'll get back to the park in a, in a minute, but one other key point that I, I guess, I'm, maybe it's more of a question than anything else. I, I know I've heard the developers say that this plan's not gonna go through if the connection at forty-one doesn't happen. Whether, whether that's lip service, it's not, not for me to determine, I mean, that could be to strong-arm MinDOT approving it, but it, should it not be a condition of the city council for them to get that access onto forty-one? Or, or at least make the approval condition on that, because I, I really don't think the streets that would serve that minus forty-one would be able to handle all that traffic. And I know we talked about decreased traffic because it's fifty-five and over. They still have cars, um, I think most of you probably still drive, they're putting garages on these houses, you know, there, there's going to be traffic no matter what. And that's, it's to be expected. I mean, I, I bought my home knowing that at some point it was going to be, be developed, and, and I don't have a problem with the development, it's just some of the key pieces that go along with it that I want to be considered anyways.
I, I.
The question about forty.
I did chuckle just a little bit when you said strong-arm, strong-arm MinDOT, I don't know if that's even possible.
Well, I, may, may, yeah, maybe that's not, maybe that's.
If you know the answer to that, please let us know.
No, I, I, I don't, I, I've dealt with it before, but I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, it does help their argument if you say, we've got this beautiful development, we really need to get approval on here. Well, I mean, as a council, I, don't you believe that you guys should at least state that, yeah, we're going to approve this project, but you do need to come through with an access point out there?
The question was already asked, and they said they wouldn't do it, if they don't get it.
I go, I know, but they're saying that, can't, is there anything on your case?
If you want it as a condition, we can put it in as a condition.
Well, no, I'm just saying, shouldn't you protect yourself on it, or, or not? I mean.
I, I would be careful there, because basically what you would be saying is that if they don't get the access to forty-one, this property is not developable.
Yeah, you, you're right. I mean.
I don't think this is, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't, I don't think this is the point in time in the overall process at which to implement that.
And I respect that.
Further, next steps that may be a look at and consideration, but I think that by the time it gets to that point, this will already be resolved.
Well, I just, I guess, putting the, the cart before the horse is, I mean, I, I guess I would like to know if I'm a developer, if I'm gonna actually have access before you spend the money for an, uh, environmental assessment study, and city staff spends all the time looking at it, and then they, everybody pulls the parachute and, I mean. I, I would just think that you'd wanna know if you're gonna get that approval before you spend all this extra resources to.
Developers go down this path all the time.
What's that?
Developers go down these paths all the time.
And I, and I'm sure that they have a pretty good idea, they wouldn't be, we wouldn't be this far.
Sure.
It would be my estimation.
Well, that, that's good, it's reassuring to hear that, it, it honestly is. I guess, ba- back to the park, um, and I know it was also referenced, too, that the, the park board had a meeting on September tenth. According to your website, that meeting was canceled, so I, I just, I was trying to get a handle on where some of their comments came from, because I really think that some of my concerns should be addressed directly with the park board, but I'm kinda looking at this as a last-ditch effort um, to at least introduce some thoughts, uh, of people who live in the neighborhood and, and what the current park is like. I, I did eventually find in your council package today the, the September fifth memorandum, um, and, and I just wanna point out again that their recommendations are at odds with the comprehensive plan and the current planning commissioner's visions. Like I said, you have a developer that has submitted a concept plan that adheres to the comprehensive plan, and then you have a Parks Board that tells them to get rid of the park. I, I just don't understand it, they, they have it slotted, a park there, and now Park Board's saying, hmm, we don't really want it. I, I don't understand that.
Matt, can, Matt, can you clarify?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about that. The, so when that, there was really two pieces, uh, of that park, so when the Moores property actually developed, half of the park was developed to be able to serve the number of homes that were in that north part, and then the second half was really meant to be able to serve, uh, the new development coming in, assuming that it would be the same type of development as what you had there, so you'd need more space to be able to accommodate that. The park that was developed, uh, was sufficient for the Moores property that was to the north. Now we have a different demographic of housing coming, and I think what the Park Board's saying is, you know, if, if we have a different type of demographic of housing, that second half of the park was never needed for just the Moores property, it was needed for the Hammer's property. And if they're already doing amenities in that development that address some of the needs of that development area without us having to build it as a public, is it worth our while to go and put the second half of that park? Cause again, it was meant to serve the Hammer's property, not the Moores property. Now, it's a fair comment, and I think it's one that we can certainly bring back to the Park Board to say, hey, you know, before, and keep in mind, this was a work session, they went on a field trip last week to be able to go around and look at different places, so they haven't formally had this application in front of them, these are their initial comments that they had come, come back based on what they're looking at.
Which is wonder why I'm wondering what's before you, you know, before the council.
Well, this is a concept plan.
I, I understand that, I, I just, I, I'm just curious, it just, I know things get rolling and they go fast, that's why I'm here tonight, I know this is preliminary, and I know there's a lot more discussions to come.
Well, this isn't preliminary, the preliminary is after this, so this is concept.
Concept, sorry.
And so, the, uh, basically what we do in concept is we take comments that come out of this, and then we provide them back to the appropriate people. So, what we'll do is we'll take this comment back to the Park Board and say, hey, so you're aware, as you guys are coming up with your recommendations, you know, I, I certainly understand why they're making the recommendations that they are, but having these comments will allow them to sort of balance those two and then come back and say, what do we think is in the public's best interest? Uh, and then they'll come back to you guys with a recommendation, and ultimately, you guys make the decision then, uh, with their recommendation.
What would have become of that park area that has not yet been decided?
It would have been just an open field, yeah, cause the park's already in. So, basically, the neighborhood parks are a combination of a, a playground and then an open
Space.
playfield, and so that, that area was expanded to be able to accommodate the larger area that was to the south.
So, that other section that normally would go with this development could just be left natural, is that what you're saying? And not be made into a park?
No, if, if we didn't, if we didn't take it as parkland dedication, they'd include it in their development as, as housing.
Whi- which is one of my concerns, too. I expected open space there in accordance with the comprehensive.
But part of that is the woods, isn't it, Liz? Didn't you, isn't that the area where the?
No.
One of the woods was?
Shows trees around the two sides.
If this was to be developed as a neighborhood park, it would be basically the playground and what field is there now, plus an expansion, just making the field larger.
Neighborhood parks aren't really designed, I, I'm not sure what you're thinking, if it was gonna have a football field and a baseball.
Neighborhood parks.
Neighborhood parks are playgrounds and a, and a, an area to play in, and that's what they are.
Right, a- a- and I understand that. Um, I guess what I was looking for is. Right. And, and I understand that. I guess what I was looking for is, you know, you'd mentioned that they decided that it, it served the neighborhood. I, I just wonder, under what classification it is served. I mean, it's, it, let's be honest, it is a bare bones park and I, I understand that it's a neighborhood park. I bought my home there with, with it there.
It's the same as every other neighborhood park we ever owned.
It's what we put as a neighborhood park.
That's what our neighborhood parks are.
But if it's expanded and-
If it's expanded, it's just more field. It's, it's nothing more than just expanding the field.
So even if you went in and doubled the size of the park, it would just be a big open field?
Yes.
Well, I, I would be okay with that too, because the, the other part of it too is if you're talking about fees that they are going to turn in for park dedication fees, you already said tonight, my biggest fear is that you're going to grab those fees and go spend them somewhere else at another park. So it's something that I think is probably dedicated to the neighborhood in some regard.
Keep in mind though that when fees are paid, they're, they're put towards both neighborhood parks and community ball fields. So when we don't use them towards neighborhood parks, we put them towards the baseball fields that the baseball associations use. And we put them towards the softball fields and the soccer fields. So they still benefit the public, but they're on a community scale.
Sure. Is, is there any plan at all for the current park space that we have to expand any of the amenities that we have there?
Not playground. Again, it would just, the, the plan for that, the master plan basically had that the playground and the playfield that's there right now would just have a playfield expanded. It would not have any additional playground equipment that's there.
Okay, because I mean, the, the field, and I hate to complain about first world issues here. You know, the expanded area they have right now is, is most likely probably an undeveloped field that just has weeds growing on it and it's up and down like that. I mean, it's, it's hardly even usable for kids to play a football game on it. And again, I don't want to bore you guys with the details of, of kids falling all over, but it's just, it, it is a bare bones park. And I guess at some point I, I would love to see some increased amenities added and not preferably the park board giving up this park and then suddenly just stacking homes in that place of what I thought was going to be at least an open space at, at some point. So.
Yep, we can pass, I mean, that's, that's something that we'll pass on to the park board and, and they'll take a look at it as, and as part of their final recommendation. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Holden, eleven fifty-five Morris Drive. So, thanks. Kevin's neighbor. I just wanted to come up, same, same as Kevin, under, always understood it was going to be developed. Not going to go into, but I, I had the same research done, kind of understood the same thing in regards to understanding it was going to kind of loop around and that was going to get expanded. So we'll expand more on that. I think one area, and I was at actually the September sixth meeting, the neighborhood meeting that Paul ran. I think one area that wasn't up there and wasn't addressed was the transition areas. It was actually explicitly brought up, especially around our area, and you, you brought it up as well, is trying to understand and like to really address, you know, when you look at this and, and the idea of the, there'll be buffer, there'll be kind of, you know, an area that's truly distinct, I guess very different, kind of, you're going into a new community. When you get to the Morris Drive and at least as it looks like from the plans, it doesn't really look like that's going to occur at all. Just to be very, very frank. And so, you know, as, as someone who has that homeowner up there, where I live, with the home I have, my neighbors have, the size of the lots, the size of the homes we have, I think that really needs to be rethought a little bit. As Paul kind of said, you know, hopefully we can do pretty good and do better. I think that's something, that's an area where we need to do a little bit better and a little bit, you know, more thought around that as we really think about what those homes are going to be and maybe just kind of use the, I, I really don't want the track home kind of thing in regards to up there that's at the top, kind of using that pinnacle. My idea is pinnacle, a Del Webb community. Maybe we can, we can use that as the, the way we, we maybe brand this. But that is kind of the biggest area right there in regards to, you know, the uniqueness of that. Because, you know, if it was up to me, an ideal situation, you're, you're talking about two very distinct, unique, different neighborhoods. And I know they'd like to have that unique, kind of distinct neighborhood. You know, don't know if the plans can call for it, but, you know, if, if there's all the discussion around the park and things of that nature, the ability to keep the two neighborhoods, possibly maybe that Morris Drive, maybe as, as he said, as Paul said, a couple entrances, maybe it is only a couple entrances and that third one, Morris Drive, doesn't have to all, all the way go through. So that's all I really wanted to say, because that's my really biggest concern as somebody who owns a pretty large lot and a pretty large home up there. And I have major concerns about that. And I know a few of our neighbors did as well, that were at the community neighborhood meeting. So that's my really biggest concern because it was discussed about you'll be able to tell you're, you're going into that community and it really doesn't look like that at all. You know, my ideal situation be you could really tell there's a big difference and hopefully, you know, it'd be very, a little bit self-serving that maybe those larger lots are the ones that are kind of up there at the top, up in that area. And then I guess my only point of confusion is on the park piece. So if they're, are they buying that piece and then they just build on that? Or is it that becomes another parcel of land that might get purchased by some other third party?
It'd be, it'd be one of two things. It'd either be under city ownership or it'd be under ownership by the, the developer. And, you know, I think, yeah, I mean, it might be a place that we look at buffers. I mean, it might be a place that ends up being additional housing that they put on. It's, if it's not owned by the city, it'd be owned by, I guess it wouldn't be the developer. It'd be the association that ends up owning that neighborhood.
But if the city, so if the city owns it, then what happens?
The city owns it.
Do you get to, do you get to decide what gets happened, happens to it at a later time?
If the city owned that, it would be because we'd expand the park.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great clarification.
If we, if we don't, if we don't own it, it's because we've made a decision that we don't think expanding the park is necessary there. So I, it creates certainty then for you as far as what to expect going into it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
But that's my biggest, biggest concern. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So these, their comments then will just be brought in as we walk, moving forward.
You know, again, we're, the, like I said, the, the park board had a more of a field trip, you know, where they went out to the site.
Right, because we had a meeting at the same time and there's no place for them to, because they have to be televised and this is the only place we can do it.
We'll, we'll talk to Marsh and we'll have them bring that back formally to their next park board meeting so that they can make, and I'm sure you're already working with that.
Well, it might not be their next, because we need to see kind of how these-
What the details are. Yep, fair enough. But before you guys see something that's going to start to nail down more exactly what this is, we'll have their formal comments come back and we'll make sure that those are incorporated in.
Good. Okay. All right. This is, I kind of look at this and, and Morris Drive, that is the, the bigger homes that, from the transition.
As I, as I mentioned earlier, I think a, a better job can be done there of transitioning, whether it's, you know, creating a, an improved buffer zone where you have more of a separation, where you can still make the street connections, but provide more of a buffer for those neighborhoods, those existing homes that are to the north. Or if you just transition it differently than what it's currently laid out, I think, I think would need to be a consideration for this.
Yep, agreed.
And this is the phase where we put those questions in, so.
Right.
Agreed. Right, any other questions up here? I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash one, two, three.
I'll second that.
All right, so I have a, a motion by Rose, second by Geisler, adopting resolution twenty eighteen, one, two, one, two, three, public, or-
It's one, two, one, actually.
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, one, two, one. It is one, two, one. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, one, two, three. We're already done with that. One, two, one.
I'll amend my motion.
All right, so again, I'll just back up. So motion by Rose, second by Geisler, adopting resolution twenty eighteen dash one, twenty-one, adopting resolution to approve a concept plan for the Pinnacle plenty homes. So, all right, discussion on that one. All right, hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. And then the second one would be adopting resolution twenty eighteen dash one, two, two, which is the preparation of the EAW of Pinnacle Residential.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash one, twenty-two.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Schultz.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler. Again, resolution twenty eighteen dash one, two, two, which is authorizing the preparation of a EAW on the Pinnacle residential development on the Hammer's property. Discussion. Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for being here.
Keep that in your mind.
All right, we're going to move on to, we'll move on to eight D, adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash one, two, five, which is the stat, establishing a preliminary city tax levy. Table twenty nineteen.
Favorite presentation.
It's like now we're to the easy stuff, right?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
All right. Boy, my eyes are getting worse. I can't see up there anymore. All right.
Well, you'll be moving into that fifty-five.
It just keeps on getting blurrier and smaller. All right. So Mayor and Councilmember, the item you have in front of you tonight is the establishment of the two thousand nineteen preliminary tax levy. Just a reminder of the process, basically, talk about statutory process first. We do, we are required by the end of September to actually establish a preliminary tax levy. We, once we establish that levy, we can't go higher than it. We can go lower as we set the final levy. It's done now so that residents can get their truth and taxation statements out before our truth and taxation hearing, which is the first Monday in December. We have that public hearing to make our final budget presentation and levy recommendation and then hear comments and then we don't take action at night. We actually come back to the second meeting in December. Now, from a practical standpoint, the way we've always approached this is to actually wrap the preliminary tax levy into our five-year financial forecast so that we make sure that the decisions we're making now, you know, know what kind of impact they have as we go into the future. So, major items we talked about last year, we fully implemented the CIP program on an annual basis. So it's a million dollars. It goes towards annual projects we'll talk about. Continued utilization of our tax levy policy. We did have the complete loss of LGA last year, but we did recoup half of that last year through our tax levy. And then we talked about sustainability of our services from a resource perspective and delivery of service levels expected by our residents. And I'll specifically talk about how we're sort of taking that first step in that this year with the addition of our code compliance division and how that not only has an impact on providing a, a more reliable service to our residents, but also has a pretty significant impact on being able to take some pretty heavy weight off of areas that right now are having to, to, to address those different items. So the items that, that we're going to discuss for the two thousand nineteen through twenty-three, so our CIP program, and I'll talk about the projects we have coming up over the next five years. Our tax levy policy, again, our code compliance and community services and how that ties into sustainability of our services. So the objectives that we have for budgeting each year, we want to support our budgeting programs that help us strengthen our mission of being the best small town in Minnesota. And hopefully after that presentation that we had last week from Decision Resources where it's pretty clear that people now identify Chaska primarily as being a small town, that's something that even as we've continued to develop, that sense of small town has gotten stronger. So I think that's one that we have to continue to focus on. Maintain our existing high level, quality service levels, limit tax levy growth to capture only new growth in the community and expenditure, expenditure inflation, so the two things that impact our actual cost of service, and then address any kind of new services that we have or are proposing. Fully fund the maintenance and replacement of our vehicles and equipment. Fund new programs only after existing necessary programs are funded. Try to avoid drawdowns in our city's fund reserves. Fully fund our street reconstruction program. And again, develop a long-term budget plan that's sustainable from a resource perspective. And we first put that into our objectives last year and again this year with code compliance division. It's really sort of our first step into addressing that. So budget environmental factors, our existing property values have continuously, continued to modestly increase. In two thousand fifteen, we saw eight point two one percent and all the way up to last year, we saw five point seven two percent increase and right around two percent new growth within the community. So with the new growth, one of the things that I think is important to remember with that is that when we incorporate the new growth into our, our tax levy, it's really not impacting the other residents. It's just making sure that as new values come into the community, that they're paying their fair share for services. So, so capturing that, make sure that, that all new residents are paying for, for the services that our provider have to be increased because new growth. Again, no local government aid payments and we continue to expect that into the, the future. We've continued to have stability in building permits. Two thousand seventeen and eighteen have been very strong. We've actually been running higher than budget for each of the years. And it's been happening not just in residential like we saw a decade ago, but it's really been a mixture of all different types of, of growth that have occurred in the community. Continue to see a steady increase of population. Our electric usage has continued to go up significantly. And again, we've seen a good balance of, of development types. So I'll circle here, the overall percentage growth in market values in the community for two thousand eighteen for taxes payable next year is five point seven two percent. You can see that residential, the existing market change was about four percent. So the average existing home will see about a four percent increase in their market values. And the percent of new construction for, for two thousand eighteen for next year is one point seven percent increase in market values just because of new construction. This is a distribution of where you see those values go across. The majority, seventy-two percent is residential, but we do have a strong commercial industrial base at fourteen percent, apartments at thirteen percent and the other at one percent is mainly agricultural property that just has not been developed yet. Our market values have continued to increase. We've actually averaged a six point two four percent increase over the past four years. And you can see we're projecting two percent each year as we look for the, through the five year. But if we continue to see these trends, we would expect that that's actually going to be higher than that. So we're trying to keep that relatively conservative. And so based on the market value growth that we will see for this year, which was five point seven percent, that translates into a five point six percent increase in our tax capacity for next year. And that's what directly impacts what people pay in taxes. So the new construction values in the community from two thousand nine forward, every year we've seen some kind of new construction, even in the lean years. And again, I put this out there just to, to illustrate that all this new growth results in, even if we don't change our services that we provided, results in having a higher service level that we have to provide because there's more people we have to provide that to, which makes sense of why we'd want to capture that new growth. I told Councilmember Schultz last week that I was throwing this in for him one last time, just so he wouldn't ever forget it, where, where we've come and where we've gone with local government aid.
I'll make sure I watch this portion of the meetings in the future.
I'm taking it out. It's never coming back again. The, uh-
I'll come back specifically.
Yeah, unless the money comes back.
I'll come back specifically for these meetings.
Bet you won't.
So we did recapture half of the lost LGA last year at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to our levy. And we're recommending no change for this in nineteen. Building permits, you can see that for two thousand eighteen, we're at about one point- Building permits, you can see that for 2018, we're at about $1.3 million for building permits, which even during our peak times back during the pre-recession times, we were just over a million. Now, keep in mind, it's 10 years later, so the values do go up, but we have seen a pretty dramatic increase from the dips that we saw during the recession period all the way up to now, and we expect that that's gonna continue into the future because we can really see now what we're gonna have going into the future. Population right now, you can see that our estimate going into 2019 would be 20, about 26,600 new residents, and during this planning period, we expect that we're gonna get to just over 28,000. Right now, we're anticipating that our full build-out to about 35,000 is probably about 20 years out, so we have about 20 years more of development, and then really, we're sort of done with development unless we focus on redevelopment projects. So electric franchise fee revenue, since the addition of both data centers and also the additions, we've seen significant additions onto existing industries in our community. Our electric usage has gone up pretty dramatically. We have 10 percent of that that comes back from the electric fund, back to our general fund as a franchise fee, and for 2019, that's gonna be about $3.7 million. And again, I always like to point out with this that, you know, we have the 10 percent franchise fee, but our rates compared to both Excel and Minnesota Valley, including our franchise fees, are still about 8 to 9 percent lower than Excel or Minnesota Valley. And so we've been able to have good, reliable energy that's cheap, and at the same time be able to have a significant impact and be able to keep our taxes down. So discussion items coming up here, these are the ones I'm gonna focus on. I'll talk about each one of them individually. So first of all, from an operational standpoint, tax levy policy. So basically, our policy focuses on two things that have direct impact on the actual cost of service. So one is the new growth in the community. So the new growth in the community is 1.7 percent, and that 1.7 percent adding that on really doesn't have an impact on the rest of their residents because it's new market value that's actually in the community. So that's increased level of service because of more people in the community. And our policy goes on to say, the other thing that impacts us is our actual inflationary cost increase for cost of providing services. So about 7 percent, 70 percent of our costs, our staff-related costs, so a big portion of that has to do with what kind of increases that we see in wages. What we're seeing at the national level for inflation right now is about, it's 2.9 percent, or right about 3 percent for inflation. So we look at those two together to come up with what we recommend for our operational tax levy. So from just an operational standpoint, we would recommend a 4.7 percent increase. Our tax capacity again, increased by 5.6 percent, so we'd actually see a decrease in our tax rate based on just the operational side of the policy. Included in that operational side is our capital improvement program, and so that's a million dollars that we put per year. And these are the things, you know, I focus a lot on 2019 because these are the things that are coming up next year. So the street overlay program, $350,000. I did put in your staff report which roads were being proposed as part of it. I don't have it in front of me now, so I can't remember, but it's in your staff report to show which roads are actually being proposed to be overlaid. Each year, we put $60,000 into trail upgrades and overlay. So this year, where you saw it was up on Village Road, and in that area up there was a full overlay of the trails up in that area. We have a new pedestrian bridge that needs put in on our main trail system. Those are about $70,000. We have the landscaping wall that's over behind Cooper's on the second Clay Hole Lake over here, which is our responsibility. That's one that's actually failing at this point and needs to get replaced, and we're still finding out more on the dock too as far as what to do on that, but we have $200,000 program for that project. Siren number two replacement, this is the one just across from the middle schools up on Angola Boulevard, that's $25,000. We have annual maintenance and a hoist replacement up at the MSB for $45,000. The Cortina Woods Playground and Trail are proposed to be the park that gets upgraded next year. And one thing that we've changed since our discussion in our work session last week is changing out and bringing Lions Park Shelter improvements into 2019, primarily because of the work that we're doing with the dog park in Lions Park to really have all those improvements done together. So that's one, I know that's one we've talked about for quite some time, is getting those improvements. We'll actually have the dollars in there to do that next year.
So a question, Matt.
Yep.
Is street overlay, is that different than street reconstruction?
Yes.
It is, because I think Christian Drive and them are, that's reconstruction, right? And not overlay? Because I see Luisa in here as overlay, but I don't see, because I knew they were coming up pretty quick here.
Yeah, those aren't ready for reconstruct yet. I think it was...
The streets, yeah, they're a mess.
Well, what you have is the seal coat.
Yeah.
Some of the seal coat has come off. They're looking at actually dealing with that, but the road structure itself is actually in really good shape there.
For some reason, I had that in my head that Christian Drive and Parkway was on the 2019 or...
It's...
It's too new for rebuild.
And it wasn't that long ago that we did the overlay, but we had some issues with that product, and so Brian's actually looking at areas like that to... Because in essence, what's happening in some of those places, it's peeling up.
So how does Luisa, how does Luisa make it and like Christian Drive doesn't make it?
The sales conditions were worse up there when the development went in, and so the roads and...
Yeah.
The actual, to me, it's really a difference between the aesthetics and the actual road structure. If you get too far gone on the road structure, it requires a rebuild, where if you get it soon enough, an overlay can stop you from having to rebuild. And the advantage to the residents on that is that overlay is free.
Right.
Rebuild is a...
So they are looking at that because I think I sent you pictures.
Yeah.
The road is just crumbling away.
Yeah, and that's, it looks bad. It's more of an aesthetic issue than it is a structural issue, but they've had those issues pop up on other roads too.
So when is, when is Christian Drive?
I'll have to find it out, but I can.
Because I had in my head it was either 2019 or 2020. I've been actually telling residents that.
It may be 2020. I'll find out and get it to you.
Is the bridge for, it's gonna connect to Lake Grace under the tunnel and all that? Is that part of this?
That's not part of the CIP. That was actually part of the construction project up there. This is mainly rehabbing things that exist already.
Okay.
So the 120, did we change something in there?
Yep. So we had some of the athletic park improvements to get ready for the state tournament in there. We have a little bit of time. We have a little bit more time that we can do that.
We don't.
Plus, I'd figure you'd say that. No, that's, one of the things we hope to do, and I know we have had previous discussions with alliances to talk about are the things that they wanna do when we're going and actually doing that.
Those bathrooms are pretty bad, and that's such a used park that they just have to get.
Well, and it's more than it's putting lipstick on a pig to go in there and try to do something to the existing. It's pretty bad shape.
Yeah, it's a bad shape.
Hey, don't knock it in the mustache, Travis.
Yeah.
Thanks for moving that. I think that's important. I think that's...
Well, I think you guys made a good point that if we're doing the improvements on the dog park, it makes sense to have all those Lions Park improvements at the same time. So... 2020, street overlay, I'll find out the roads. We have not identified the specific roads yet, but we have about $260,000 in seal coat of 40,000 trails, siren. The big one there is City Square Park Rehab, and like I mentioned last week, this is gonna depend, the timing exactly in this is gonna depend on when everything happens with reconstruction over here. So it's possible that you might see this shift a year, but it's important that we put the resources in so that we make sure that when the timing's right for that, that we have the resources ready to go.
Have you been, have you been working on the rethoughts of City Square Park?
No.
That's not too far out, 2020, and if you're talking, doing some major shifting of things...
Well, that's gonna be a major discussion we have to have. What are we... We won't be able to come to that conclusion in five minutes.
No.
So 2021, again, street overlay, there's a little bit more that he has programmed in that year, less on the seal coat. You know, the big things that year, so the Town Course Park Rehab, we put that one in there. The Town Course Park needs rehab, but one of the things I've been sharing with you guys a little bit is a master plan that we've been looking at for Town Course and looking at how we could potentially create some more community-wide amenities up there. So part of that is if we did that, we'd have to move the playground, and it's time for it to get rehabbed anyway. And so putting those dollars in there so that if we go forward and start looking at plans and say, yes, this is something we wanna do, that we know we have the money budgeted in the CIP program to be able to go along with that. So again, this could shift depending on some of the concept plans that we've been sort of messing around with, but I wanted to make sure at least we put some dollars in there to be able to earmark that. Oh, I, this is where the Lions Park Shelter rehab.
I was gonna say, you got the Lions Park Shelter again.
Yeah, we're gonna...
What was the other 80,000?
Well, that's where I'm gonna talk to some people. No, the, we still have some detail work to do on it. I just wanted to mainly show that we're shifting that Lions Park into 2019. But then we'd have another park, and whether that's athletic park or whether it's another park that we wanna do, we typically have two parks per year that we're going in to actually rehab. And then the other one to point out is the fuel system replacement. That's a big one, and there's gonna be things eventually that we have to do with dealing with our fuel system up at the municipal service building, and so we wanna make sure that we have dollars put in there to be ready when we have to make some moves on that. Can see the big ones in 22, Shadowwood Park Rehab, and then we do have the playground replacements at Lions Park. Those really aren't in need of replacement right now, but they eventually will be. The Shelter is definitely the one that needs the attention at this point, and that's why we have it in 19. And then 23, you can see McKnight Park, the playground up there, rehab on that, Hickory Street Playground Rehab, and then Pioneer Park Rehab. And the question came up last week about would, some say they have irrigation, some say they don't. The ones that we show irrigation are ones that don't have irrigation now, and for neighborhood parks, it gets down to, we typically have the worst-looking property in the entire neighborhood because they're not irrigated, and really sort of the thought is, should we keep up with what the rest of the neighborhood looks like? And then the ones like Pioneer Park, those are pretty heavily utilized parks, and so to keep them irrigated to keep them playable during the year. So again, 19 ends up being a lot more solid than the rest of them, but it gives you a sense of the types of projects that we're looking at in here. And also, I think important to point out that the four years you guys took to put the million dollars in place to do this, these things wouldn't happen but for that. And it was pretty clear in the survey that the results we looked at last week, that people in the community are very supportive about us putting dollars into things that keep the things we already have invested into in good shape. And so I think this is a direct impact of the work you guys did over the four years to get it to this point where we can actually start programming these things that really need to be programmed on a regular basis. And we've obviously had some catch-up to do because we haven't, didn't have this before, but the more we do, the faster we'll catch up and get these things done. So for 2019, the planned expenditures, so again, the CIP program, the one that represents the new item in the budget that we had the funds to be able to support adding it this year, but we needed to deal with the permanent funding of it, is the community service officers with our code compliance division. This is one, you know, I talked about it last time, you know, it's the addition of two and a half people to bring us up to a full complement of four people, so one supervisor and then three CSOs. This has two impacts. This has the impact of us providing a more consistent and reliable service to our residents, especially as our aging, our housing population ages, and we see more problem properties in the community, and how do we deal with it on a proactive basis versus a reactive basis? But the other thing it does, and this is why I think it really ties to that sustainability of services that we've talked about in retreats and things like that, is if you look at the way the service is provided now, it is about as inefficient as you can have a service provided. You know, we have a number of our departments, so Kevin, Tim, Brian spend a significant amount of their time out in the field, you know, look, basically monitoring things on a reactive basis because we just don't have the staff in place. And so this move is not only gonna improve the service level that we have within our city, but it's also gonna have a pretty significant impact on making our other services more sustainable because we won't be putting, quite frankly, pretty expensive resources into providing services that don't require that expensive of a resource to do. So I think this is gonna be something that's gonna have a big impact, not only in the residents, but also on the organization itself. That represents about, I had it somewhere in here, it's about 2 percent increase for the new service with that, and you'll see what the tax impact is for the average resident then. We have planned dollars in for employee wages and benefits. We're currently starting that process of negotiation now, so I don't wanna sort of throw out, you know, sort of what we're looking at. I think in the initial discussions we've had, I think so far, we're on the same page, and it's stuff that we've programmed and planned for in the budget, but we have not come back with any recommendations on contracts yet. So that's something that we've planned something in, and I plan on coming back to you with recommendations this fall yet on that. Fully funds our equipment acquisition to make sure we keep up with the replacement of our equipment. And then we also wanna make sure that we put dollars in, the trial period for the body cameras that we have ends next summer, so if that's a program that we say, yes, we wanna continue to do to make sure that we have dollars in there to be able to continue that. We also include with that replacement of our cameras and our vehicles themselves, to have both systems actually working under one system, in the long run, is gonna be a lot more cost-efficient for us to look at. And then all other...
What kind of dollars are those cameras? I don't remember if we ever really talked dollars.
I don't have it on, I'll get it for you. It's something that Noel's put in, a sort of placeholder, but we're actually getting actual quotes from it, so by the time we set, get closer into the budget, I'll have an exact number for you.
Is it, just your comment in there, you know, under the CSOs, this is the only new program to address in the 2019 budget? Well, that's really not true because the body cameras are new as well.
Some of them, though, we've, we're eliminating some expenses that we have, we're eliminating some expenses we have for existing cameras in our cars by looking at the two together. So we're not, we're not necessarily considering it new from a funding perspective. We're using existing resources that are already there and then programming up towards it. So we're not recommending any increase in the tax levy to be able to support that. Then all other items would remain unchanged. So recommendation, you know, I mentioned before, from an operational standpoint, the 1.7 percent new market growth and the 3 percent inflation is a 4.7 percent increase. The 2.4 percent represents the addition of the code compliance division. And this next page looks at what that impact would be. Again, our tax capacity went up 5.6 percent, so what it says is that with the proposed increase, the average home in 2018 had a, was valued at $289,000. That same home... That same home in 2019 would be valued at $299,000. The taxes on the example home in 2018 would have been $831, they'd be $871 for this year. So a $40 annual increase would have a 4.8% impact, uh, on the average resident. Now, again, this is the average resident, so if somebody has.
Only city taxes.
And it's only city taxes, average resident. If somebody had less of an increase in their property values, their tax impact would be less. If they had more of a value increase in their property, their impact would be more. Um, so, you know, basically what it's saying is our tax rate would go up by 1.3%. Uh, it's the difference between what our, uh, levy, uh, increase and the tax capacity increase would be. The good news is, uh, so this, this chart is looking at, assuming that we implemented, uh, the tax levy recommendation and comparing it to every other city, assuming they had 0% increase. Uh, we're actually one position better, uh, than last year as far as the tax levy per capita. Uh, and that's based on the increases, uh, that other cities saw last year and then also our population increase. So our tax levy per capita.
Three.
$346, that makes us 82nd out of the 87, uh, cities in the metro area that we compare to. Um, I throw Chan Aston in there because it's a neighboring city, you can see their tax levy per capita is $427. Uh, we're the sixth lowest in the, uh, twin cities, uh, again, assuming we change and nobody else changes, which won't be the case, people will change. Um, and then, you know, the, the, uh, you know, we're the lowest tax levy per capita in Carver County. The one thing we talked a little bit about, uh, last week is, um, the one thing we've never really had an apples-to-apples comparison on with Chan Aston is that, uh, they've never had franchise fee. Uh, it is something, uh, we did have a, a broader discussion with them, uh, last week. Uh, they did not implement their franchise fee last year, but they're looking at doing it this year. And one of the questions that came up is if they had a franchise fee, would that take away assessments on properties for street reconstruction? Because they're looking at taking their franchise fee and using it to pay for street reconstruction. Uh, the answer is no, they would actually still have assessments. Um, the, uh, they put that proposal forward last year and people who had already been assessed were not happy. So. And so, uh, they propose on, uh, at least the proposal that they have now would be is, uh, increase of a franchise fee. Or adding a franchise fee for both electric and gas, which is the same as what we have. Uh, and then that would go towards their street reconstruction, uh, program. So again, from a schedule perspective, September 17th tonight is when we establish our preliminary tax levy. Uh, we review our enterprise fund five years, uh, in October. In, uh, uh, mid-October to November, we review our annual, uh, budgets. December 3rd is when we'd have our annual truth and taxation hearing. And then December 17th would be when we'd, uh, consider adopting our final 2019, uh, budget and our established tax levy. Uh, again, uh, if we set it tonight, we can always lower it, but we cannot go up. And so you guys do have a resolution, uh, in front of you that gives the exact amounts. And one thing I do wanna point out is, uh, in that resolution, it has the city levy at, uh, $8,989,333. There's a city tax abatement lot, uh, levy, so the tax abatement levy is something we have to levy, but it's offset by, uh, by the project that it's supporting. So it doesn't impact, uh, general residents. And then the thing that we're having a meeting on real quickly after this is our EDA setting our HRA levy. So the total levy, including our EDA, is the $9,700,654. The tax impact that I showed up here was on everything. So it showed, uh, the impact of the EDA, uh, and the, the city tax levy. So it wasn't just looking at the, the city tax levy. Thanks, Matt. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Arman.
Thank you.
Yeah?
And, you know, for people at home watching, um, we've seen these numbers before and we've talked about them. And, um, I, I know that a number of us really, we're hoping not to have to see an increase and, and keeping it very minimal. And, um, while $40, um, doesn't seem a lot, I, I, for some people it may be a lot. And, but we're growing and we have to move, we have to grow with what's happening or we're gonna run into more troubles down the road. It's just kind of, it's, these are one of these, these are the meetings that are on the tough side, you know, you. We all pay taxes too, sitting up here, we're getting the same impact. And, uh, uh, no one wants to see any increases, but if we don't, if we don't do these small steps, somewhere along the line, we're gonna have giant steps. It's gonna cost us more money.
Well, and as Matt pointed out, I think kind of the key aspect of this one is the CSO officer, you know, I mean, that's gonna take a lot of, uh, creating this new department. And provide an improved service really to the community is kind of a, a key aspect of it, you know?
Right.
We've always been about quality services and providing services at a high level. And so this is gonna allow us to continue to do that and really in that same respect, take some of the pressure off of some of, uh, the people who are performing these roles in the past.
I think when it comes. Well, and I think when it comes to homes, I think people sort of view it as our existing assets that we have as a city is that. Just like they want the assets of the city to be good, they want their homes to be good too, and more importantly, they want their neighbors' homes to be good.
Right.
And if there's not somebody that's, uh, you know, monitoring how we're doing that and only responding in a reactive way. I can tell you how those conversa- well, Kevin can definitely tell you how those conversations are because you have the conversation with the person that gets, uh, um, you know, that somebody calls in on. They're just like, whoa, me, what about that guy over there?
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it's unfair and inefficient, and it puts a heavy burden on, uh, on places in our organization that over time are gonna, are gonna really be impacted by that.
A lot of department heads and, you know, we're not paying them to do that. That's not, that's not their job, it's not their role, it's not what they should be doing.
Efficient way to do it.
Yeah.
Considering the, the population growth that we've had, we need more coverage so that our officers can be out doing other things while they're monitoring our ordinances. And, uh, plus the cost of everything has gone up, so that's such a reasonable, um, increase in my mind. Um, that we're still gonna provide extra staff for the C, for the CSOs.
CSOs.
CSOs. Cause we have increased populations, so we need them. And I'm just, I'm amazed in this town what we get done for the amount that we charge here. Our taxes are still pretty low.
It's always not necessarily the increase that's taking care of what we have. It's, it's kinda like what we've been doing all along. I mean, the CIP is, is we're just taking care of the investments that we have. And that goes back to like what Matt said, is that, you know, most people's biggest investment are their homes. But if their neighbors aren't taking care of it, somebody has to be there to be reactive and say, hey, you gotta get that taken care of. And I, you know, so, I say.
But we have more people to provide services to, is what I was trying to get at, so.
I think the other thing, even though I heavily wanna emphasize that, that, that code compliance and CSO is gonna be something that is. A citywide, across-department, uh, type of, of thing that, uh, you know, we're gonna have multiple departments involved in it. It is also providing an ancillary benefit of providing us a training ground for future officers too. And that's becoming a, that's becoming a very difficult profession to, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's, uh, uh, we don't see as many people wanting to get into it as they did before. And so I think having, uh, you know, the number one thing in a hiring process is eliminating the unknowns. And if somebody is already working for you and is already providing a high level of service, um, you know, it, it provides you another step to allow them to grow in the organization and take some, care of some of our future needs still.
It's a familiar face and somebody that knows the area.
Yep.
Yes.
So.
Right, any other comments on the budget? Again, this is, this is, uh, we're setting, um, a limit that it can only be this high, we can't raise it. But through these, uh, um, other meetings, we could find something that we could lower it. I mean, I will just be honest, it hasn't happened, that I recall. Uh, not gonna.
True.
Hold anything back, but it can, it will not go up from here, but it could go down if something were to be found. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't guarantee that, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-125.
All right, so I have a motion by, Row second by, uh, Schultz to, uh, approve Resolution 2018-125. Again, establishing a preliminary city tax levy for taxes payable 2019. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? That was loud. All right, uh, moves us to item number nine, bills. Uh, questions, comments on a bill, if not, an entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve the bill?
Uh, motion by Councilmember Geisler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Row to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, uh, Nate, we call Row, please.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Row.
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes.
Moves us to other business, uh, let's start with Councilmember Schultz tonight. You were just here last week, yeah, it was kinda that same thing. All right. No.
Don't have anything to discuss at this time, I can think. Give me a moment, I know that might, something might pop in there, but I doubt it, you can chime in.
Raise your hand. Councilmember Row.
Yeah, the only thing I have to say is the 41 project looks great. I mean, it really looks beautiful and it, uh, they did a great job and, you know, the cleanup's amazing, you know, when you were there a couple of weeks ago. And drive down there, you wouldn't have known it, so they, they did a nice job, hats off to everybody that worked on that project, so that's all I have.
I have not driven there during a morning rush or afternoon rush, how is that?
It's good.
It's awesome.
Right on.
Good.
Yeah.
All right.
It's, it's the best I've expirates in the entire time I've ever lived in Chaska.
As I told you, I loved it when it was closed, cause I thought you could get around easier. I just didn't know sometimes when they open it back up.
Looking at too, on the double turn lane that was gonna go onto Hunter Mark, they've got it marked out. Is that because we need to finish across the way for them to turn onto it?
No, it's just to keep it as a single lane, uh, going, cause it's only a, it's only a single, it's a longer single left-hand turn lane going into a single there. Uh, in the future, if they went to a double, that would help to.
So that's why they allowed for it with that extra space?
Same thing with, uh, if, if you look at how the single lane is separated from the main 41, there's that sort of hashed arc up there.
Yeah.
That's the second lane that you'd have in the future if you ever needed it, so it'd just be restriping it.
Well, intentionally, yeah.
Uh, no, if you're going north on 41 and turning west on Hunter Mark, okay.
It's intentional.
The other thing I kinda noticed that, I mean, just potential, um, problem or issue is really kinda that south, uh, southeast corner, uh, the Target corner. You know, they've got the retaining wall that kinda came up and it ended, and now it's just, uh, grassed over. Um, it, that's, that's a pretty steep slope.
I, I noticed that sitting at the light, I don't know why they didn't bring that retaining wall around.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they didn't just kinda go around the corner with it, but.
So you're talking about there's no retaining wall, the street steep slope going up to Target?
So you've got, you've got, right now, the planted grass coming down to the trail. Right now, you've got a lot of dirt and mud that's washed over just because of the rains. I'm sure after today, there's probably even more mud out on that path.
Oh.
Um, and, and so it, it, it's a steep slope, I'm not sure you're gonna get much to grow there.
I don't know how they're gonna cut it.
Plantings are, or how, yeah, that's the other thing was, I'm not sure how anybody's gonna get a mower on that thing.
I was sitting there and I, I said just the same thing, I said, why didn't they, I, I don't know how they're gonna get anything there.
Yeah, part of it, because of the, I mean, just knowing too much and trying to forget about that project a little bit. Uh, part of it is the, the right-of-way and the property that is owned by Target and how the proximity of where the limits are and things like that. Uh, trying to not have to encroach onto Target, but I will follow up.
Might be just something to keep an eye on and, like I said, it could kinda, just kinda continue to be a nice or a problem.
Well, and what you're saying too is it's, it's rut, if it's flushing down on the trail.
Yeah, I mean, the, the angle comes down fairly steep and it, I mean, it ends literally at the path, it's not like it comes out and flattens out for a while, if I remember right. I mean, it pretty much just ends right at the, right at the path.
Can bury that, so.
Okay.
And there's, there's nothing, when I was there, there was no erosion control on it, now they maybe.
Uh, yeah, I actually ran through there yesterday and that's kinda, that came across that path and happened to, yeah, it was, it was kinda fairly muddy across there.
Someone did ask me if the common sign is gonna go back up?
Yeah.
The big sign that said common?
Yes, and they're also putting a sign at, uh, Two-Two Medical Center back up too.
Oh, good.
They're rebuilding that, I think, today.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Geisler?
Um, just wanted to let folks know that, um, we're gonna have a project open house for the 212-44 interchange, and it's this Wednesday. So, short notice, but it's, uh, September 19th, 5 to 7, at the Chaska Event Center. So if you wanna know more about that project, it's a good time to come. And, um, I see the Dollar Trees opening September 27th, that's awfully quick.
Wow.
And, let's see, the, oh, Downtown Street Party's coming up, so save the date, cause that's gonna be fun. Um, the 29th of September, it's a Saturday at noon, Second Street East, and there's gonna be food and fun and drinks and music and games and so much more. But anyway, um, and right next door, Garden Angels is holding their Fall Fest, uh, festival. So that's gonna be open till mine, so there's a lot to go, going on down there, it'd be a lot of fun. And then I was gonna ask you, Matt, if you would speak to the, you know, in the past, we talked about the Miracle Field and, and, uh, maybe a little bit of a timeline. I'd seen a post about a lady who was very thankful for this specific swing that was at Fireman's Park that enables her daughter to enjoy swinging because of the angle she can lay at. And then Shakopee has a, an all-inclusive, uh, park for, for disabled children. And, uh, so I was, I talked to you a little bit about it, but maybe just so people know what the timeline is looking like.
Yep, so, uh, that's been a project that the Chaska Rotary's been leading up and, uh, uh, raised about half the dollars now. About $300,000, $350,000, right in that range. City's actually purchased the property, that was part of the community park property they would purchase up there. Uh, I really don't have a concern that we're gonna raise the rest of the funds. Uh, we're really trying to time it more now with the timing of when the Collector Road goes to the south there. Cause that's gonna be the big timing of when we develop that park up there. I think with the interchange going in next summer, I think that's gonna help tremendously with, uh, with seeing development happening on the south side of 44 up there. And when that happens, then we can move down and actually develop the park. Uh, getting to the question of adaptive playground, that has been the plan, uh, or program for that field is to include a fully adaptive playground, uh, as part of that. And, uh, we had a chance to go up to Playscape, uh, Skate Structures up in Delano to, uh, check some of that stuff out. And then, uh, also, uh, I've been getting emails from people who have visited different places, like I know Wilmer has, uh, a really nice adaptive park.
And Shakopee just opened one.
Shakopee just opened one, Lakeville has one next to their Miracle Park. So the, the budget that's been developed would include a, uh, adaptive park too.
Fantastic.
Great.
And I think that's all I have. Yep, that's all I have, Mr. Man, thank you.
Matt?
Just wanna, um, just make a note, if, if you get a chance, take, take a look at Veterans Park, it's looking really nice.
Yeah, I need to get over there.
Um, the, uh, we are targeting the, uh, Veterans Day, uh, actual Veterans Day. We're playing phone tag, but, uh, actual Veterans Day, so they're looking at the, I think the 11th is on a Sunday this year. I think it's observed on a, on a Monday, but, uh, having that Sunday as being the, uh, actual ceremony, working with the VFW and the Legion on that. And then the challenge coins, uh, that's something that Marshall and his crew are starting work with, uh, both organizations to come up with a challenge coin for this, uh, Veterans Park. Which should be pretty neat, uh, cause that's, if you remember being on Task Force, that was a big part of the discussion we had is actually displaying challenge, uh, coins up there, so. I think Nate, uh, had probably the best comment of, he went up and talked to the contractors up there, and what was their response to, uh?
I can't use the words that were, uh, were stated, but they were very excited. It was, I, uh, I was talking to the contractor who was putting the granite star, and I was just telling him how, how cool that is and, um, you know, how exciting it is. And, and, you know, they must be proud to be a part of that project, and he said, f yeah. So, yeah.
Well, I guess he's really excited.
Kinda thing.
To put it in context, the people who are working that have done these in other communities, so they. To put it in context, the people who are working that have done these in other communities, so they see what other communities are doing and they're particularly proud of this one, so.
I've watched them. It's an interesting process on that star. That's quite the artwork of pieces to put in there. And it's amazing how they fit.
I've taken a lot of photos as different steps of the, of the process as they developed it. I haven't been up in the last week or so, but I want to go back up and see it.
Yeah, that's nice.
It's going to be beautiful. Can't wait.
That's all I-
Lukey, anything? Anything from the peanut gallery over there? Nate?
I just have one thing to note for you all. Brian Jung's been leading up a project on Audubon and forty-one, the big grassy area the city owns there.
Angler, Audubon.
I'm sorry. What did I say? Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Angler and Audubon. So that four-acre grassy hill area, going to be starting to do a prairie restoration project there. So you'll see some phases to that project.
Thanks.
First phase being killing off grass. So it'll look worse.
It's going to look worse before it looks better.
Good. Maybe we should put the dog park there.
Dog park there, yeah.
Yeah.
Put it there for a couple of weeks.
One thing, Kevin's going to be putting out a education piece on that for the public because it's a really visible site and people might look at it and say, what the heck are they doing?
Yeah, it's going to be a big question.
But when you look at what can happen when it's done, so like the area just to below, on the bluff of the community center or even out at the town course, this could look really beautiful out there once it gets established. And so we're going to be putting stuff out to, you know, sort of educate. It's actually the Carver County soils. Water and soils that actually funds most of the project to support communities doing this. City of Stillwater, I know two weeks ago, it was on the radio, they put in a, what are the, pollinator garden in downtown Stillwater and huge regional deal that they put it in. That's what they're sort of making this into, a pollinator place for bees and butterflies and all that stuff, so. Some people like green manicured lawns.
That sounds exciting. Sorry. Hey, how about those twins?
Yeah.
Is that it, Nate?
You mean the X Vikings kicker?
I look forward to frolicking with butterflies with you, man.
Kevin shook his head, so he's done. I don't really think I have anything either. We just were here, so I can't have anything. That hasn't been touched on. We do have an EDA, probably will be a very short meeting immediately following. We do have a gap for those people watching. How long, Michael?
About two minutes.
Two-minute gap, so we will leave for a minute and we will be back shortly, so.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Row, second by Councilmember Schultz to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. They're adjourned. We'll see you.